Board of County Commissioners hearing to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Marino. Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks. Vice Mayor Weinroth.
I'm present.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. We do have a quorum of six county commissioners present in the chambers. We also have Commissioner Maria Sacks will be joining us in just one moment. We'll move now to agenda item 1B and C, invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner MacBernard. You please join me in rising.
Dear God, as we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can be built with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, for leading us in the pledge and invocation. We'll move now to agenda item 2A, additions, deletions, and substitutions. Madam Administrator, you're recognized.
Mayor, Vice Mayor members of the board. Our additions, deletions, and substitutions include page 10, 3C4 is being moved to regular. Page 43, 5F1 is an add-on. And this is the memorandum of understanding between the county and the state on opioid litigation.
Very good. We have one movement from the consent to regular agenda. And in addition to the agenda on 5F1.
Move adoption of the agenda as amended.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Bernard to adopt the agenda as amended. No further comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? The agenda is adopted as amended, six to zero with Commissioner Sacks absent. But joining us shortly, we'll move now to the consent agenda, which starts on page seven. Is there any commissioner that would like to pull any item from the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda, Mayor.
A motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth to move the consent agenda forward. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second the motion, but I do have one comment on one of the.
Very good. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Bernard to move the consent agenda forward for approval. Any recognizing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 3P1A and B, we're approving a donation of $95,000 from the Friends of the Mounts Botanical Garden, Inc. to fund costs associated with retaining consultant services toward necessary design work for the windows on the floating world, the windows located at Mounts Botanical Garden of Palm Beach County. Just want to thank the Friends of the Mounts Botanical Gardens. I think we may have some representatives who are here. And so we want to thank them for continuing to being a great partner with the county in terms of making Mounts Botanical Garden a great place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, and we're all delighted to have the Friends of Mounts Botanical here and for their hard work, contributions to that wonderful facility and organization that the county partners in. I don't see any further comments by members of the board on the consent agenda, agenda item three. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth and seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor? All opposed? The consent agenda passes six to zero. We'll move now to agenda item four, special presentations, which are found on page 38 of the regular agenda. Agenda item 4A, presentation to County Attorney Denise Niemann by the Florida Association of Counties.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the commission. I'm Ginger Delagall, the Executive Director of the Florida Association of Counties. With me today is Emily Anderson, also a member of our staff in Tallahassee. Emily serves as the official liaison to the County Attorneys Association. I want to start by saying thank you for giving us a few minutes on your very lengthy agenda today, but to honor your retiring county attorney Denise Marie. She probably doesn't remember this, but I've actually known Ms. Niemann for my entire career, which now spans three children, a marriage, two dogs, lots of gray hair. Twenty-eight years for me. It's longer for her. But I remember her voice as coming over old speakerphones with my law partners at Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson. A few years later, I actually started to get to know her on a much more personal level when I came over to the association as general counsel. And what I really want to honor today is the work that Ms. Niemann has done over the course of her career, not only for this county in a manner of just stellar service, but also for the state of Florida. Ms. Niemann has always said yes, anytime we have called and said, "We need your help." And it was either her personally, as a speaker at a conference, or a continuing education event, or it was lending the time with your permission on behalf of her staff to help again her peers around the state of Florida, as well as the other 66 counties of this great state. When Ms. Niemann first started in leadership at the County Attorneys Association decades ago, literally there was a box, a banker's box, that was called the Ark of the Covenant. And it would be FedExed from one president to the next president. So she has seen, and under her leadership, the County Attorneys Association has gone from the box to now they are 296 members strong. And we have an official staff liaison. They have three or four conferences every year. Conference calls every Friday, all the way around the year. The point is that because of her leadership on committees, on the Board of Directors, being elected by her peers around the state, the county attorneys, they're not the most lively group or friendly group. No offense, Commissioner Bernard, I am among them as well. But they elected her to be their president as well. There are many people that I could also mention that she has lent to make this state a better state on issues of huge importance. Going all the way back to the Article V implementation at the Constitutional Revision Commission, through the statutory implementation and the work of Lenny Berger and his countless hours even while sick that he lent to other counties around the state. But that was because Denise Marie allowed him to help everyone else. All the way up to the opioid crisis, medical marijuana, the Department of Juvenile Justice cost shift, the Medicaid cost shift, and litigation from the poor billing practices that were imposed upon the counties many moons ago, amicus briefs. The list goes on and on and on of the professional services that she has given everyone else in the state. On a personal note, I would like to say that Denise Marie has been just an outstanding friend and a huge champion of her peers around the state and for us at the Association of Counties. Her reflection of this county among her peers and among elected leaders, not only here but around the country because of her involvement in recent years with the National Association of Counties, has reflected incredibly well on you. And I want to give you that message of what she has done for this county outside the jurisdictional boundaries as well. So thank you very much on behalf of what I fondly term the mothership, the Association of Counties, because we have many affiliates. But I want to thank this commission for allowing her, over the course of her entire career, to donate the time of her staff and of herself, again, for the work that is done all around the state of Florida. And finally, Denise Marie, I have some well wishes for you. On behalf of Emily and I and all of the Association of Counties, I hope that as you head into your next adventure, everything you dream of comes true. We look forward to seeing the sparkle that you leave in the world and just leave a little twinkle in your wake for the rest of us. Godspeed to you. Thank you for your service. Mr. Mayor, I do have a small token of our appreciation on behalf of the association that I would like to present to your county attorney.
We would be delighted.
Thank you.
Ms. Delagall, on behalf of the board, thank you to you and also thank you to Ms. Anderson for taking time out of your busy schedules to come join us here in Palm Beach County to share such kind and sincere words about our beloved county attorney, who will no doubt be going through this process of adulation and praise, as she always has in her 35 years of service to this county. But we're delighted to have you here with us to share this special moment. Now we'll open it up to comments. We'll start with our county attorney, Ms. Niemann.
I wouldn't have been able, just a few minutes ago, to even say thank you because I was already tearing up. I kept on looking at Melissa, saying, "I can't do this. I'm not used to this kind of reception, and your comments mean a lot to me." FAC was a big home for me. FAC was a big thing when I became county attorney. Some commissioners were very active and wondered why the county attorney's office wasn't participating. And I was a young lawyer, and I thought, "Wow, this sounds like a lot of fun. They have receptions. They have all these different meetings." And it was much, much, much more than that, obviously. But I just haven't stopped for 25 years enjoying. And I think I'll still pop in from time to time. We have the best CLE program in town, so I'm not going to be a stranger for sure. And I know we've established friendships that will last a lifetime. So thank you very much for this recognition. You do great work.
Thank you, Denise. And I think a lot of the board members are unwilling to accept this as fact that she's leaving us. So we're in that process of maybe grieving. Commissioner McKinley, our immediate past president of the Florida Association of Counties.
Yeah, I want to thank Ginger and Emily for driving down from Tallahassee to be a part and to recognize Denise for all of her years of service. I don't think people understand. I think they think we just show up here on Tuesdays a couple times a month and do our commission meetings. And whether I'm looking at Mayor Wilson shaking his head back there with the Florida League of Cities and Richard Radcliffe, the Palm Beach County League of Cities, I'm looking over here at my new clerk. And one of the first questions I asked him when he decided to run is, "You're going to get involved in the Florida Clerk and Comp Trollers Association." I don't think people understand the countless hours we put in behind the scenes to not only help the constituents in our county, but to help people across the state of Florida, and the partnerships and the learning opportunities that we have to share ideas and best practices, and the coordination that we wouldn't be able to do what we do without our legal support. They're the ones that offer us those opinions so we don't go too far off the rails. And Denise, you are so recognized. Gosh, between losing you and to retirement and losing Herb a few years ago, there's a big gap, big shoes that will have to be filled. Some high-heel ones that'll have to be filled as well at the Association of County Attorneys. But I want to thank you on behalf of the Executive Committee of the Association of Counties for all of your work and your, just your undying support of everything in mentoring young attorneys who are now entering public service. Your service will not be forgotten. Thank you.
Very good. Well, that concludes comments by members of the board and the special presentation to our county attorney. Again, thank you so much to Ms. Anderson and Delagall for your time here today and the very sincere and kind words on behalf of our county attorney. We'll move now to agenda item 4B, proclamation declaring October 5, 2021 as LOMAX Herald Appreciation Day in Palm Beach County. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized, ma'am.
Wow, it's been a long time since we stood up here and did proclamations like this. Mayor Wilson and LOMAX, if you'd come up here and join me, please. Speaking of service to the community, today we are declaring October 5, 2021 as LOMAX Herald Appreciation Day. LOMAX has served as the city of Belle Glade's city manager on two separate occasions, totaling nearly 21 years of his distinguished career. Since starting his second tenure as city manager in 2008, he has improved the city's financial condition so that it is virtually debt-free, increasing its net worth from $38.8 million to $55.7 million. He's cultivated numerous relationships with local, state, and federal legislators to help bring the city additional appropriations to fund projects. He's overseen numerous infrastructure improvements to the city's streets, drainage system, and parks. During his leadership, he has worked to build and diversify Belle Glade's economy beyond the agricultural industry, which is the lifeblood of Belle Glade and the surrounding Glades region. Under his supervision, Belle Glade has attracted new businesses that have significantly increased employment opportunities for residents while increasing the city's tax base, including the largest economic development project in more than 30 years with Finfroc. LOMAX prioritized the timely completion of new and redeveloped housing projects so residents could have much-needed housing options. When the public pavilion on Torrey Island was rebuilt in 2013, it was named the LOMAX Herald Pavilion in recognition of his leadership and accomplishments. LOMAX is a man of few words, and he doesn't mince those words and can answer questions in 10 words or less. Whereas he and his wife Susan are looking forward to spending more time on their cattle ranch. And she is a Glades County deputy with the sheriff's office there, so a family of public service, and we thank her for that as well. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this fifth day of October, that October 5, 2021, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed LOMAX Herald Appreciation Day. And I can't tell you how much easier you've made my job in being able to bring good things to the Glades. Your partnership is one I will never forget, nor that first interview I had to go through when I first decided to run for the county commission. You have done so much for the community, LOMAX. And I know you retired in August. You're still helping the city a little bit. But it's an honor to present this to you today. Thank you.
Just let me say this. I want to just take a couple of minutes to thank the county for all they've done, not only for Belle Glade, but for the entire Glades area. I could name numerous things that you've done for our area. But Ms. Baker, your staff is just phenomenal. I don't want to start mentioning names, but one, as I mentioned, Todd, all the help that he gave us when we would be at Palm Beach County Day in Tallahassee. Your guys in utilities and water and wastewater have done a phenomenal job. And the things that the county's done is when they came out and took over our water and wastewater, the three cities were struggling. Our plants were antiquated. We did not have the expertise nor the funding to do what needed to be done. Since the county's taken that over, it's just a complete 180. And the quality of water for the Glades areas, residents, South Bay, Belle Glade, Pahokee, and the unincorporated area, is night and day. It has just helped us in so many ways. And on behalf of the commission and all the Glades areas' residents, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harold, for your comments and for your service to our county, to Belle Glade. Mayor Wilson, did you have any comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, to all the commissioners, the county administrators, Mr. Allen, to our outstanding champion here, Melissa McKinney, our representative. This song is for you, LOMAX. You are so beautiful to me. Can't you see what your life has done for me? You're everything we hope for, and you're everything that we need. That's why we say to you, Max, you are so beautiful to me. Thank you so much.
Well, it's hard to follow that, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're delighted to have brighter times in the county commission chambers, that's for sure. Very good. Thank you, Mayor Wilson and LOMAX, for your time here today for your service to Belle Glade and Palm Beach County at large. That'll conclude agenda item 4B, proclamation declaring October 5, 2021 as LOMAX Herald Appreciation Day in Palm Beach County. We'll move now to agenda item 4C, COVID-19 update by Dr. Alonzo and county staff. We're delighted to have with us Dr. Alonzo from the Florida Department of Health, Director of Palm Beach County, and our emergency manager, Mary Blakeney, in the county attorney's office. Dr. Alonzo, you're recognized, ma'am, and thank you for joining us here today.
I'll turn on. Here we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Well, I'm very happy to be here once again. Can't think and talk at the same time. Okay. So thank you very much, Mayor, for inviting me again. Vice Mayor, commissioners, and county administrator, Ms. Baker. We have some good data here for you today as we go through and take a look at all our data that I want to present to you today. We're going to start with our usual numbers that we present, but I'm adding a piece that I think will be very important for us to look at as we go forward in terms of metrics for the coming months to come. So let's start with our, take a look at our U.S. numbers. As you can see the graph, those numbers are coming down. The current seven-day moving average of daily new cases, 106,395, have decreased by 13.3% compared with the previous seven days. And a total of 43,298,203 COVID cases have been reported as of September 29. So you can see that we have 75.8% of the people, 12 and above, have at least one vaccination. And so we're slowly moving up that percentage, which is also very important if we're going to get this under control. Our number of vaccinations have been increasing. And you look at this number here, is the total population. So not to be confused, we always look at the 12 and above because the 12 and below have not been able to be vaccinated yet. But you can see that there is a decline after our peak here of vaccinating. And it's going down a little bit, went up, and then come down. And it's very similar to what's going on here in Palm Beach County. So we have administered over 214.3 million people have been vaccinated and received at least one dose. About 184.6 million people, or 55.6% of the total population, have now been fully vaccinated. Now, there's, one of the things I also want to cover today is the definition of the boosters and the third dose. I went over that at the last meeting, but I thought I'd put it here a little bit clearer so people can understand because there's a lot of confusion. So the booster shots have been now approved by the FDA for Pfizer vaccine only. And for those people who've completed their initial series at least six months prior, so they can now get a booster. And that is for people who are 18 years of age, who live in long-term care settings or have underlying medical conditions, and also for those who work in high-risk settings or live in high-risk settings. Now, what do I mean by high-risk settings? So that includes first responders. It includes healthcare workers, firefighters, police, and congregate care staff. It also includes all the education staff, including teachers, support staff, and daycare workers. It also includes food, agricultural, and manufacturing workers, correction workers, U.S. postal server workers, public transit workers, and even grocery store workers. So this is a large group of folks. All these people are in contact with the public in many settings where those individuals are now allowed to get a booster shot. So you have to get your, the booster from Pfizer, and you have to get the same vaccine for that booster. And that should be six months apart from your last vaccine. The third dose is what originally was reserved for people who are severely immunocompromised, especially those who may not build the same level of immunity to the two-dose vaccines compared to people who are not immunocompromised, who are building a normal immunity against it. So for those people, they should reserve, receive a third dose. And it's very important that if you go ask for the third dose of Moderna or Pfizer, that you make that statement, that you want a third dose. Because if you ask for a booster, you're not going to get it. Okay? So that can be done 28 days after the second dose. And those are, the people who are considered moderately to severely compromised are people who have had organ transplants, HIV or AIDS, are actively on chemotherapy for cancer, people who are actively taking it, not passed, but actively taking chemotherapy, and also folks who are on immunosuppressant medications that decrease their immunity and therefore they make less antibodies in their body. So that's the thought, and it's very important to make that distinction, especially when you go to the pharmacies or to a testing center that you ask for the right thing. Now, let's take a look at where we are in terms of our community transmission by states. All of the states, with the exception of California on the West Coast and Connecticut right there. You can't really see that very good on the slide, but Connecticut is in moderate, and so is California. Puerto Rico is actually down under substantial. That's where we were back in June. So we cannot be complacent, and we can't let our guard down. The CDC is still recommending the use of masks, even if you're vaccinated, because we are still in high community transmission. And most of this is because of the deltas. You can see the delta's basically taken over all the variants. The predominant variant is the delta in all our states, as well as here in Florida. This is a graph of where we've been in terms of cases per week. And you can see that, like I mentioned last time, that even though we have, our peak was much higher in terms of how many folks we had, that the cases per week was lower in January than it was now. So we're finally down to about where we were along here. So we're definitely seeing a very nice curve going down. And we hope that we can sustain that until at least the winter months. We'll see what happens again in a couple of months. So let's take a look at our Florida numbers then. So we see that we have now, we're at, remember that we're giving these dates, we're giving this data on every Friday. It gets released at around 5:00 in the afternoon. These are the numbers that we're allowed to release to the public. And these numbers are then going to the CDC. So our new positivity for the last weeks, the weeks of September 24 through September 30, we were at 6.5, the same as it was for Florida. But our cases per 100,000, we've started reporting that, and that is very important. And I'll show you the next slide why that is so important. That's down to 162.6 per 100,000 population. That went down over 34 points, 34.1 points. In terms of our cumulative data, we have seen a total of 963,627 people vaccinated in Palm Beach County. That accounts for 74% of the population over the age of 12 that can take the vaccine. Our number of cases total is 220,108. And our total positivity, which has not changed, that's good because it had been going up. So right now, it is not changing. That number will not come down until our daily positivity goes down below five. That number will not come down until our daily positivity goes down below 5. So we'll see that going down soon, as soon as this keeps going down. That number is 19.6, and that's good that it hasn't changed. At least it's not continuing to go up. So why am I talking about these two numbers right here? I'll show you the ones here for Florida, the daily positivity and the 100,000. So the way that the risk is determined is to look at the number of cases per 100,000 in the past seven days, it's a seven-day average, and the daily positivity with the PCR test for the past seven days. So if we take a look at these numbers, it shows you where it needs to be. So right now, our 100,000 is 162.6, which is above 100. But our daily positivity is 6.5. So that 6.5 would put us down here under moderate. So we have moderate for the positivity and high for the 100... The population. So if one is greater than the other, you take the highest one to determine your risk. So therefore, Palm Beach County is in high, and so are the rest of the counties except Glade County and Henry, who have moved to substantial. And remember that in June, at our lowest... At our lowest moment, we were in moderate, and we were very close to moving down to low. We had below the 5.5, the 5 positivity rate, but our 100,000... Our cases per 100,000 did not reach below 10. So that's why we didn't quite make it to the blue. We were very, very close. So that's important because this metrics is being used in many places to make administrative decisions and to take a look at it. It's very important that you measure this for several weeks. You can't just take a one-day point in time. You should at least see it stabilizing for at least a minimum of two weeks. I prefer four to make sure because things can change rapidly. So that is something that can be used to make determinations in terms of what to do with, you know, the cities and the crowding and everything else that all of you have to make decisions upon every day. Our vaccinations are going well. I'd like more people to get vaccinated, but we are doing well. We're continuing to go up. So we're up to 74% of total vaccinations. Completed doses is only 64%, and 10% have only taken the first dose. Broward is at 84% and Miami at 91%. However, we may reach the substantial level faster than Broward and Dade because their cases per 100,000 is higher than ours, even though their positivity is much lower. So that'll be interesting. And, you know, we're always in competition with other counties, so we want to get to substantial before they do. The monoclonal therapy has really dropped off. So far, the total number of sites, the 25 sites, have vaccinated over 124,071 individuals who have gotten monoclonal therapy. For West Palm Beach, we're at 5,813. And I... It's very interesting to see that on September 28th, our numbers were very low. We were down to 47 shots only that we gave. Forty-seven people got monoclonal therapy. They've really gone down. Our peak was about the third or fourth day that we were open, we did 1,300. But on September 29th, for so... For some reason, all of our top five locations all increased. So that tells me that more people, for some reason, I don't know if the cases had gone up. Interestingly enough, when I looked at the positivity, the daily positivity at the CDC website, which they change more frequently than our report, the positivity had gone up a little bit. So I hope that's just a blip and not a trend going back up. So, um, our main efforts are to continue... Continue our efforts since we have the Delta variant that continues to be the predominant variant, that is much more contagious and causes breakthroughs. That's why we're having so many cases. Vaccinations remain the most important tool to stop the spread of saving lives. In addition to that, we have to wear our mask, wash our hands, good hygiene, and distancing. All those things will stop us from getting the virus. Hospitalizations are decreased with more COVID cases being discharged than those that are being admitted. That's very important. As of 10/3, the unvaccinated patients remain the predominant admissions at 84%. There are fewer children being admitted at 3% of the 197 admissions that we had, and 5% of the children are in the ICU, but the numbers are much smaller. So we need to be prepared in case there's another surge coming in the winter and the holidays approaching. The viruses from the southern hemisphere will migrate to the north during the winter, as they always do, and so we have to be ready in case that happens and be prepared. So please, continue to urge folks to get vaccinated, to protect yourself, your family, and of course, the community at large. I will pass it over to Mary so she can give us all our stats from our statistics that we're following.
Thank you, Dr. Alonzo. Our Emergency Manager, Ms. Blakeney.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator, Baker. I'm going to go through the COVID phase restart metrics that we are maintaining here. First of all, the total tested positivity rate, the upper right-hand graph shows the overall positivity rate, which has been increasing for 10 weeks, but it has remained stable for the last three weeks at 19.6%. At this time last year, our overall positivity rate was 12.54%. The lower-left graph indicates the positivity rate over the last 10 weeks of testing. The graph in the upper-right-hand corner shows the daily lab positivity rate since last July. The lower-left graph shows our daily lab positivity rate, which has dropped for the sixth straight week in a row, this week averaging 6.5%, but it is still above our 5% target. The daily lab positivity rate has been above 5% since July 13th. When it relates to COVID deaths, although the previous six weeks showed an increase in the number of reported deaths, this past week, we saw a reduction of the reported deaths. The graph in the upper-right-hand corner shows that our overall COVID-related deaths since May of last year, our death rate currently stands at 2.24%. As it relates to MedAlert calls, when individuals calling 911, you can see by the chart in the lower-left corner, the MedAlerts have decreased for the past seven weeks. This past week, the average was more than three patients a day. This is down from the all-time average back on August 14th, where it was 33 patients a day. On August 20th, Emergency Directive 2021-A was executed, requiring each hospital in the county to report specific data elements each day by 11:00 AM. I'm going to go ahead again today and share that data set, but just to remind you, in order to maintain consistent data, the information shown today reflects only the dates when all hospitals reported. These dates represent 29 of 45 days since the directive was implemented. The first graph represents the number of new COVID-positive patients admitted each day compared to the COVID-positive patients discharged each day. The red line represents COVID patients' admissions, and the green line represents COVID patient... Patient discharges. This graph represents the number of staffed beds each day compared to the daily bed census. The red bar represents bed census, and the blue bar represents staffed beds planned on any given day. When it comes to admissions of vaccinated versus unvaccinated, this graph represents the number of COVID-positive patients admitted each day who are vaccinated compared to the number of admissions who are not vaccinated. The red bar represents unvaccinated patients, and the blue bar represents admissions of patients who are fully vaccinated. Adult hospital ICU beds in use. The blue bar represents the total number of adult ICU beds in use each day, and the red bar represents COVID-positive adult patients who are in the ICU. And then when it comes to our ventilator usage, this graph represents the number of ventilators available, ventilators in use, and ventilators in... In use with COVID-positive patients. The green bar represents the total number of ventilators in inventory each day. The blue bar represents the total number of ventilators in use, and the red bar represents COVID-positive patients who are on a ventilator. As we continue to monitor our countywide positivity rate and hospital surge, we need to keep encouraging residents to get vaccinated. Our Public Affairs Department continues to maintain the list of resources on our county website where residents can go for vaccines and testing. There are over 160 testing locations throughout the county. Many of these sites are open seven days a week, and in some cases, offer both testing and vaccinations. As Dr. Alonzo said, we have vaccinated over 200... 963,000 people in Palm Beach County, which represents 74% of our 12... 12-years-and-older population. We continue to encourage people to get vaccinated while continuing to wear a mask, wash our hands, and watch our distance. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Blakeney. We'll now open up Florida questions by members of the board. Commissioner McKinley, and we'll go to Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you. That 74% is 74% that have at least one, or 64% that are fully vaccinated.
Correct.
Correct. Dr. Alonzo, just a question. On those vaccination rates, let's say a college student gets vaccinated in Leon County or Alachua County, are they counted as a... And their driver's license has a home address of Palm Beach County. Are they counted as one of Vowers or one of the counties where they were vaccinated?
Where their vac... Where their address is. So it would count in the county that they have their address. So if they're from Palm Beach County on their driver's license, it would count for Palm Beach County. Likewise, people that get vaccinated here, same thing happens. They get counted in their resident, just like with the deaths.
Okay, so that 64% is a vaccination rate of anybody living anywhere in the state or in the country that has a Palm Beach County address that they've listed when they got that vaccine?
Correct.
Okay. And then on... On your slide, determining community transmission risk, are we only counting positive PCR tests?
Yes.
So if somebody tests positive with a rapid test, but they don't do a follow-up PCR test, that test isn't being counted?
Not unless we have it either verified or they then go and get a PCR. So when we talk to somebody, for example, who calls us and tells us they had a positive test at home, for example, then we recommend that they get a PCR. We follow them, make sure they got the PCR, and then we report that PCR is positive, and then we do the contact because we have to verify that the test is actually done by someone. So there are some tests now that, if they're witnessed, so when they go to a site, for example, our sites that are using the binex as well as the PCRs, those are verified and entered into the computer. But these numbers are the PCR tests.
So if I go into a walk-in clinic, or I go into the mid-county senior center, and I get a rapid test, and I go home, and I get a call that my test was positive, unless I follow up with a PCR test, that positive test is not recorded?
At this time, what we're doing is that the... The ones that get reported into our... We're following up with those people that get reported into the system, like from our sites.
Okay, but if I go to a walk-in clinic?
Right. You're right. So those numbers are lower than they are because we know a lot of people are using the home test. It makes sense. And what we're working with the companies are to have them go into the system so that we can count all of them. But at this time, those numbers are under-reported precisely for that reason that you're saying.
Okay, and if somebody does a rapid test at home, it's up to that individual to actually call and self-report it to you?
They will report it to us. We do a lot of that, especially in the schools. I think most people at home who just do a test don't report it to us. The folks at the school usually do because then they keep their kids at home, and then we get that report from the nurses, and we follow up with all those cases. But most people that are doing it just at home are not reporting it to anybody.
All right. Well, I think that's important to note, that these... These are the best numbers you can get, but it's probably on the low end of reality.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. Oh, Ms. Baker, just one other question. The emergency order that we have in place that was resigned yesterday, just to clarify, number one, it's strictly just allowing hospitals to provide data to us?
That is correct.
And number two, what are we looking for? What's our goal to be able to let that emergency order expire?
We are currently looking at our positivity rate. We have in the past... This board in the past has actually recognized and pushed the CDC 5% positivity rate and down. I have been in contact, constant contact, with Dr. Alonzo on this issue. In addition to that, we're looking at the hospital information, and as Mary showed you on the screen, that number is the... The number of bed... Staffed beds, learned a lot, that is going down. So we're able to show that more availability of beds are there. I think as Dr. Alonzo, unless we have a surge, that number will continue to go down, and in a week or so, I think we'll be at the 5%. And we'll be able to show a steady and stable hospital availability rate, and then I would be recommending to the board that we no longer have that EO in order. But our issue is a number of these... This information is no longer reported to the state. It is putting a burden, and I recognize that, on the hospital staff, especially if they come in on weekends and put the data in the system. So we're closely monitoring it, and when we can relieve them of that additional task, we will, but we all want to be in the position that our hospitals can handle the residents here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. And just for the sake of clarity, when it comes to the execution of the emergency order, it's my perspective that this board directed me to execute it, and that I will continue to do so until otherwise instructed by a majority vote of this board. Commissioner Weiss, then Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, and thank you for being here, and always thank you for your assistance and information. I have a couple of questions, and this is actually, while you were speaking, I had constituents contact me for some clarification. If you received a third dose, potentially because you're immunocompromised or, you know, have those conditions that you stated, would you also then need to get a booster on top of that?
No.
Okay, so that... If you're doing the third dose, there's no need for a fourth dose?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there, as we're learning, has they come up with a standard for an appropriate level of antibody... Antibodies in people's systems to protect them from COVID?
That is still controversial. When you get an antibody test, they do have a range that is considered that you have protection, but it's very difficult to really see whether or not that is actually protecting you because there's other factors that come into play also. So that's a little bit controversial, and that's why they made the recommendation that if you were immunocompromised within those four categories, even if your antibody levels were good, to go ahead and get vaccinated with the third dose.
Okay. So there's really not a way to determine... So it... I'm just going to clear... Repeat what you just said, which is, if you're in one of those categories for the third dose, just get it regardless of what your antibody tests are showing.
Yes, that's the best recommendation.
Okay.
It certainly is not going to hurt you, and you're better off getting... Being over-protected than under-protected.
Okay, very good. And then, any additional information in regards to our updates on the Lambda variant and what's going on with it?
I'm sorry, I missed the...
Lambda variant. The Lambda variant?
The only one that we are following at this point is the Delta. They... The CDC, of course, follows all of them and looks at all of them, but the only one that's been determined that is causing a problem has been the Delta. The other ones are low or insignificant at this time. Certainly, the Delta continues to be the predominant one, almost Certainly, the Delta continues to be the predominant one, almost 99. I mean, it's almost 100%.
Okay, and do you know how long the state plans to operate the monoclonal antibody site in Westgate?
They have not given us any termination date at all. So I think it will continue to be there. The numbers are very low, but that, you know, 40 people getting saved from perhaps going to the hospital is important. So I think they will continue it unless there's change. There has been a, a pill now that has been approved, I believe, or?
Emergency use.
Emergency use, which is approved for pandemics. That's the normal term that we use in a pandemic. And that will, you'll be able to take that orally. So, so if you're able to get that, that would save you from having to get the four shots.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for this update.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Alonso, thanks for being here. You'd mentioned, I think Commissioner McKinley had asked the question in regards to the rapid antigen test. Could you kind of like tell the public what's the difference between the rapid test and then the PCR test?
Yes, basically, the, the rapid test utilizes a different method of, it's like a, like when you do a home pregnancy test versus going to the doctor and having your blood drawn to look for the actual pregnancy identification that's on the, the, the nucleic acid amplification is a molecular test. So it's much more precise and it's really looking at that amplification of the virus. Versus a rapid test, it's just testing whether or not the virus could also be another virus that's not the COVID virus. It's just identifying a virus, a SARS virus. So there are other SARS viruses that is possible that you have. So when you test for this, you have to be careful that you're also looking at the symptoms. I always say you te, you treat the patient, not the lab test. So, for example, if a person gets a rapid test and they're symptomatic and it says negative, but you look and sound like you have COVID, you need to proceed to the PCR test to make sure. And sometimes in the hospital, your body still hasn't made enough viral replicates for that test to pick it up. And so sometimes you have to wait a couple of days before you actually show that you're positive. So again, you've got to treat the patient, not the test result. That's very, very important.
And follow up, Ms. Mayor?
And so if someone takes a rapid test at home, would you want them to advise them to take a PCR test afterwards?
Especially if you're symptomatic and you have symptoms, you definitely want to take the, the PCR test to make sure.
And so, just to make sure, so the PCR, if they take the PCR, then they, that would be reported wherever they take that PCR test?
Yes, and, and if that shows up positive, then that shows up in our system. Then we can count it as a positive test.
Okay. Now, you had mentioned the, the monoclonal antibody. When would you advise a, someone who's tested positive to take the, to go and get the treatment for the monoclonal antibody treatment?
The monoclonal therapy should be taken by anybody who is at high risk for hospitalization or at high risk for death as a result of the COVID. So if you have diabetes, high blood pressure, heart conditions, anything like that, and you become positive, before you get really, really sick of actually having to go to the hospital, you should get the monoclonal therapy. Those are man-made antibodies that will be injected either through your vein as an infusion or it can give, be given underneath your skin, two shots in the abdomen and one shot in each arm. That makes you create antibodies against the COVID. And that will stop you from perhaps having to go to the hospital and certainly from becoming more severely ill to the point that you may die. So it's as a prevention for those people who are at high risk.
Okay, and like where would the people, how can someone go and get the monoclonal antibody?
All you have to do is drive up to the Westgate Recreation Center. They're open seven days a week. And you just go and go through and get your shot right now. There's hardly any waiting time at all.
Okay, so, so they don't need to do an appointment?
No, no appointments is necessary. They're open, they're doing few. Now, when they were having lots of, you know, 1,000 people, there was a wait. But right now, that, that's no longer the case.
Okay, thank you very much.
You can also get it through your doctor's office. Your doctor can send you to an infusion center. They can send you to the emergency room. But we prefer that we clear that emergency room, that they, they're actually sending the people to the site now to have it done unless the doctor's doing it in their office.
And is, just one last question is to make sure. And if they do do the monoclonal antibody treatment at the Westgate Center, is there a cost to, to the resident?
It's absolutely free. This is being sponsored through the medication and through the state. And so there's no cost at all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Alonso.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you, Mayor. Back to, good day, glad you're all here today. Back to the boosters and the third doses, a couple of questions. J and J, if you've had the J and J shot, where do you fall into any of these categories?
They have not proven the studies yet for the second dose or the booster, either way. They're filing, they will be soon filing. I, I read a study that they did. And they will be filing for the ability to do that. So until that gets approved by the FDA, that won't happen yet.
So anybody who had the J and J shot, they basically, they're not a, they're not eligible for a booster?
Correct, or, or a third shot, yeah. Which is basically the same thing. It's just depends what your status is, right? So if you're immunocompromised, that is where you fall into the third shot. If you have the Pfizer, then those people over the age of 18 that fall in those categories can get the booster. Those are for people who are basically healthy.
So if you had the Moderna shot, then you're not, you're only getting a third shot if you are compromised?
Correct.
But you're not getting a booster?
Yes, if you ask for a booster, they're going to say, sorry, we can't give you one. There's no boosters yet for Moderna.
But the booster and the third shot are just both a?
It's exactly the same medication, it's the same bottle, yes. So that has confused a lot of people because they'll go to the pharmacy and they'll say, I want my booster, which is what most people would probably say. And then they say, I'm sorry, that's not available yet. And then the person walks away. So that's why I'm trying to make that clarification.
But if they go in and say, I'm looking for my third shot?
Then you get it.
So please beware of what word you use when you go to get your?
Correct.
Third shot.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks for the clar, clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, just one point. And Dr. Alonso, when you say that there's no cost for the monoclonal therapy and there's no cost for a vaccine, there's no cost to the patient when they show up for that?
Absolutely, that's a very good point to make.
There absolutely is a cost. It's about $20 to the federal government, which is paid by the taxpayer for a vaccine versus 1,500 to $2,000 per monoclonal therapy dose that the federal government is paying with our tax dollars. So it's a very important distinction to make that this is not free. You're just not being charged as a patient when you show up.
That's correct. We should never use the word free. Every, there's a cost to every single thing that we do, absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. I just have a quick follow-up. In, in recent weeks, the federal government through executive action and orders has instructed larger businesses to either have their employees vaccinated or have them tested on a weekly basis. I don't think that applies to local governments. But have you had any practical evaluation of the efficacy of that strategy?
Well, we, we do see the numbers going up. So obviously, the organizations that are doing that are helping us to get to that number. It has also caused a lot of testing being done for those who wish not to get vaccinated. So it's creating extra tests that are taking up lines and taking up spaces for people who are sick. But time will tell to see if we get to that herd immunity faster because of that or not. And I think with the resistance that we have out there in the community, it also has caused a lot of chaos in terms of employment and people desire, you know, making a decision of whether they have to resign or keep working. We're in shortages of, in lots of places, including restaurants, all kinds of services. The school teachers, I think you, you see, there's shortages. There's shortages of nurses, definitely, and other health personnel. So it, I think there's a good side and a bad side to it, like everything else, every decision that we take. So I, I think in terms of the numbers, yes, it has increased the numbers of vaccines. But it also has caused more testing to have to be done for those who don't want to get vaccinated.
Is there any value from your perspective? Because it would seem to me that in our normal course of our lives, we get tested if we have sort of a suspicion that, that we may have been infected. But most people don't do it on a weekly basis just out of habit. Is there any value in having that ongoing testing where it's required every week?
Well, the value is of catching someone who is either asymptomatic or having symptoms that they think are just allergies and not coming to work sick. So the main reason that the businesses are doing it is to stop the spread of the virus within their organization, which then puts out entire departments out at one time. And certainly, that has been a rule in many of the hospitals for many years with other vaccines that are mandated. So it's not unusual to ask health facilities and things like that to have mandated vaccines. Same reason that we have mandated vaccines in the schools to protect the children from measles and chickenpox and, you know, other mandated vaccines. So there's definitely a protection that you want to give in the community for vaccinations. But the problem right now is that with the, the huge controversy that there is for people that don't want to take the vaccine, it also causes unnecessary testing for those who are taking up, having to go get tested and be in line along with people who are sick waiting to get tested.
Very good. And I do believe there are units of government in the county, I think Delray Beach and even independent constitutional officers that have brought their testing in-house for those employees that aren't vaccinated. And they are required to get tested on a weekly basis. Are you aware of, of any of that? Do you have any feedback on that?
Yes, that makes it very convenient for the staff to get tested. It also makes it very convenient for the fact that they don't have to go stand in line. It's quick. Some, for example, Apple gives their employees, even if they're vaccinated, it gives their employees a test that they can send if they have any symptoms. And the test gets sent out to a lab and they have a, a result very quickly. So that's another interesting way to do it also.
All right, very good. And just a reminder to members of the public and employees and anyone occupying this building that we currently do have a requirement that you wear a mask over your nose and mouth. So if you don't, do not have a mask on, please promptly do so or I'll be asking you to leave the chamber. All right, very good. Are there any other further questions by members of the board? Thank you so much for your comments here today. We very much appreciate it.
Happy to be here.
That will conclude Agenda Item 4, Special Presentations. We'll move now to the regular agenda, which is found on page 39. And we'll start with Agenda Item 5A1, Clerk of the Circuit Court and? Was there an item, the consent agenda's already been adjudicated? It always moved to the regular agenda, yeah. All right, very good. So we'll move to 5A1, Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller, Mr. Joe Bruzo. We're delighted to have you here today.
Thank you, Mayor, and to the county commission. It is my privilege and honor to address all of you, especially so many friends and relationships that we've built throughout the year, the years and to the county staff. Cannot thank the county staff in Verdina, Todd, and the team enough. And I'll, I'll get into that a little bit later. But just a point of personal privilege before I begin, Mr. Mayor, it's also an honor to, for the first official address to be doing it on the day that Denise Niemann gets honored and Lomax, the, the, the city manager of the Glades, gets recognized and honored by Commissioner McKinley. Serendipitous to say the least. I just wanted to bring you inside our organization for a little bit, give you a brief report, but really tell you what's going on because our office is so essential and vital to the functions of what you all do in the county at large. As you, you will hear me say time and time again, we have over 1,000 different statutory duties. So somewhere along the line, our residents touch our office. And obviously, as the clerk to you, all the Board of County Commissioners, we interact at every waking moment. That said, when I came into office, I brought the philosophy that was maybe a little different than some of the other clerks from around the state, for sure. We are here, not as a co-equal, but we are here to serve you. Our office is here to serve you, the Board of the County Commission, and the residents. With that culture, brought a couple of changes. One of the very first things that I did when, when I was fortunate enough to take office was do the best I can from day one to weed out all politics in the office. And what does that exactly mean? Number one, I set what I would consider my version of an executive order, no political contributions by the employees or their family or extended family or distant staff. Also, I'm not taking contributions from vendors or anybody that does office or business with our office to weed out any potential conflicts. Also, you would have to take me at my word because there's no written rule, but I pledge publicly and time and time again, when my time is done in this office, you will never see me go work for a vendor or somebody that did business with this office. And lastly, you know, my time in the Senate, and I, I know Commissioner Bernard, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Sax, if she's up here, and Melissa, you are an honorary member of the legislature as far as I'm concerned. We, we saw a lot of different changes at state agencies. And when a new director or secretary would come in, would pretty much bring in a political team, I did not do that. I was fortunate enough to have an eight-month indoctrination to the office before I took the office. I got to know it. I, I would submit to you fairly well. I'll be talking, if not bragging about my staff in a moment. But I was, I, I had a promote-from-within philosophy that we hold near and dear, strong to this day. And that's exactly what we did. So there wasn't political hires at all. One, one thing that I want, the, the other thing that I did when I took office, I requested through Senator Janet Cruz that the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee, which I used to chair, run an operational audit on our office. Basically, I wanted a clear bill, a clean bill of health and I wanted to know where any issues may arrive. We are expecting the findings of that audit very shortly. We, I, I believe they've fairly concluded their operational audit. We did have some phone discussions of the findings or potential findings, but it will be submitted to us in writing. The way that works, they'll have their findings, they'll give it to us first. We'll have a point to respond to the findings and then it will become public. Then I have to go up to Tallahassee and address J-LAC. So that will be coming, I would say, within this month. As we know, as elected officials, we are only as good as our staff. And as, and as I talked about being promoting from within, I did make some changes at the executive level. I'm proud to announce we have the most diverse upper management I would submit that this office has ever had. But in that, I wanted to highlight the, the top executive team, if you will. Shannon Ramsey Chessman is no stranger to you all. And Shannon really served as the chief of finance in her prior role for the majority of the time that she was under Clerk Bach. I did not fill the position of a chief of staff. Shannon was promoted to a true chief deputy clerk and fills that role as the public would, would know as, as the chief of staff of the office. And? And I will tell you that our synergy amongst our chiefs is really good. And I think that has transcended down to the rest of the organization. We have a large workforce of over six, or about 650 individuals. Next, Amy Borman. I got to know Amy in that indoc period. She was a director down in courts. Now, courts is the largest part of our office, has over 400 employees. It is essential. It also encompasses our recording. It encompasses a lot of that thousand different statutory duties. Amy's come, Amy is also in charge of running our passport offices and some other things. But Amy has been excellent. I promoted her to Chief of Courts, so she heads courts. Radcliffe Brown, and I know Verdina knows Radcliffe for a long time. Radcliffe is the Chief of Finance, so the Clerk and Comptroller side, I think Shannon and I at the top, then Amy at, as the Chief of Courts, and Radcliffe as the Comptroller side, which we call Finance. And I think it's safe to say that I'm probably a little bit more involved in some of the finance aspect than some of the other clerks. But it is important to me, our funds. And Radcliffe does a great job of managing a very complex side of the House. And in that, I just wanted to bring up a couple of quick things. And Commissioner Weiss, thank you for serving on the Investment Committee for us. We will be bringing a couple of things forward, including, I would like to see our Israeli bonds be doubled. We are heading into a period, as you probably know, and some of you may not, where a lot of our long-term investments are maturing. The products out there, as far as money markets, CODs, the SBA pools are not paying nearly what they were years ago. The Israel bonds, the Israeli bonds are a great product. We only operate right now at 2% invested in Israeli bonds, so we can absolutely get that doubled. One of the directives I have that goes along with diversity in our office, I would like to think we have the most robust directive or my finance team for minority investment. We just moved $50 million over to Morgan Stanley. And in this $50 million tranche, 99% of it is placed through minority, in minority brokers. But we're also going to be moving over a lot more money into minority-type investment CDs held by minority-owned banks. So we, at the end, when we are concluded, which will take a couple of months, I will be able to stand up here and say we may be, per capita, the most heavily invested minority comptroller side of the House, possibly in the nation. That's what we're leaning towards, or that's our goal at least. That said, I know you probably have been reading in the news about inflation and seeing our market up and down. John, who heads our, or is one of our top analysis, analysts on the investment side, when I was in that indoc period, I was telling him inflation, inflation, inflation. He didn't quite believe me, and we're sitting here with inflation. But the reason I bring that up is it's not only the short-term goals, but on positioning our finance side of the House, your money, our residents' money, that if things go awry, our money is safe, that our money is protected. I'm greatly concerned, and I'll give an example. And this may not happen for years down the road, but I think it's worth bringing up. China is, is going after our currency. And they're positioning to move the dollar. Right now, our dollar is the world currency. If they're able to successfully get it to off the world currency, or let's say over the next decade, that's going to put our dollar in a financial crisis to the likes that we might not have seen. So we're having those internal discussions right now, just on doomsday scenario. Because as we know from COVID and everything else, anything can happen, how we can move and protect our funds if something like that occurs where we go into a dollar recession or, God forbid, a depression. So I just want to let you know that I'm looking at every angle as to protect our funds. Just a couple of key points. You know, we are leveraging technology very efficiently and effectively, and I'm going to get into that. But this is the start of the fiscal year. Our county-funded budget for the comptroller side of the House is 6.4% lower than it was in 2007. This is a testament to the office's commitment to fiscal responsibility. So we're operating at a lower budget than in 2007. And we were primarily able to do that by technology. And again, I'll get into that in a little bit. In fiscal year 2021, our investment team's management and the county's investment portfolio earned $20 million for Palm Beach County. That equals to $43.22 per taxpayer in Palm Beach County. We're expanding our use of OnBase, which you'll see in a minute, a content management system that eliminates our use of paper and tracking and issuing payments. This is big. This speeds up our ability to process payments to vendors and everywhere else. We were able to turn around CARES Act payments to small business owners and county vendors in three to four days. It used to take us, on average, to seven to 10 days to issue payments when we were processing paper documents. No one explains the importance of this process better than our team. I'd like to show a short video so you can see how we're using technology to better serve our community.
We wanted to have a Google Read project in the clerk's office. And so first, our mind was, okay, let's go get some scanners. And what we want to do is to scan some papers and restore the papers electronically. We quickly found out that it's not just a matter of taking these papers and scanning it in. What we discovered is that there are actually benefits to having electronic documents.
The benefit is that now the document enters into this building and is immediately digitalized. OnBase is really enterprise content management system that allows us to take digital assets that are here at the clerk's office, store them so that they're available when they're needed at the right time. That gives us full transparency into where in the organization the document is sitting.
Our document management strategy is much bigger than just a matter of, let's say, we're going to get OnBase and we're just going to scan the documents. We can have the system through artificial intelligence and robotic process automation validate that, yes, this invoice is valid and we can move on into the next phase of the workflow process.
Being able to have documents routed through paperless electronically just sped up the process. So for our vendors who service the county, that means they're getting their payments a lot quicker. And a lot of our vendors are these smaller mom-and-pop organizations. And especially during the pandemic, this was huge, being able to get them their payments a lot more quickly.
This is where it impacted our citizens the most because those payments for the rental assistance and the CARES Act payments that the county was responsible for came through finance. And because our staff was able to work on these things, even though we had a pandemic and people had to be out remote, being able to process those electronically to get them through faster allowed us to actually disburse the funds that were made available to the citizens and the federal government. We've learned to be very, very flexible, that that benefits not just us, but it benefits the county. And then eventually, that benefits the taxpayers.
So those reports gives, well, we're working with your county staff right now. Those reports give county staff additional information they need to proactively connect with people in the community, with resources they need to help stay in their homes. We are fortunate that we have not seen a crush of eviction cases in our community. Our office currently has 1,180 open eviction cases in the court system, down from 1,336 in May. And I know, Counselor, you will understand this when, actually, I don't know what we're at now, but when I took office, we were almost 70,000 cases backlog. We got down to about 62,000 cases, which I would tell you is the lowest amount of backlog for any large county in the state. Staying open is essential, especially with the things we do, especially we process all the child support payments. I could go on, I don't want to bore you, but we do a lot, and the bottom line is we need to stay open. You saw Radcliffe in the video. I did want to highlight, I have two more chiefs, we have two more chiefs on staff. One, there are two that I was able to hold and keep. Lisa Turner, who's head of our HR, such, so integral to a large organization, put in her resignation under Clerk Bach, but I was able to twist her arm and convince her to stay. And Lisa, I'm sure your staff knows, is on board. And Kathy Bernstein is our head of communication, Chief of Communications. And we have a robust communication team. They're going out in the community, they're really educating our constituents on all our services and how we can help. To give another example, and I think this is great for everybody to know, under also Amy, we have a self-help center in our courthouses. And they're designed to be like, if you ever walked in, like an Apple Store. And this is a place where people could come in. We obviously cannot give legal advice, but our staff can direct them on what type of forms they could help within a degree. It's also set up with a childcare center, so if anybody needs to bring in a child and work on their court cases, that's implemented, or that is there as well. I want to tell you briefly what's coming next. And you're going to hear a lot about IT, but you'll appreciate this, Mayor. One of our artificial intelligence is docketing bots. And Shannon decided to name a docketing bot, and I had to approve it unfortunately for me, named Tim T-Bot. So when they get docketed, it's all you have.
Which intertwines very well with the University of Florida coming to Palm Beach County and bringing their artificial intelligence center with them.
So I want to tell you, so we have, we're starting with chatbots. We will start with automatic responses to our frequent asked questions and work our way to live chat soon. We redid, we revamped and did the entire website. I was able to work on that again prior to taking office with Kathy, the Chief of Communications. OpenGov, you'll hear more about this project from me and from the finance team in the coming months. The information will mirror what we provide in our Clerk Checks and Balances Guide. Every year, update monthly in Open Government platforms. So there was actually a pullback under the previous administration to not get on OpenGov, not do a lot on OpenGov. We're putting everything out as we can on OpenGov as far as transparency is concerned. You just heard about OnBase. And one lobbying effort of Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, we vindicated our interest in the tax collector space at the Midwest Community Center. That way, we can provide our constituents more service because I know that is becoming vacant. And if I can take a point of personal privilege in this sense, Mr. Mayor, I thought I knew a lot about the County Commission and what you all do. Obviously, working as a legislator and your incredible team that you have at the Legislative Delegation, at the time, Melissa, Todd, and the entire team, I really felt I had a good grasp of the county and really what your jobs as Commissioners were. I have been in-depth in the minutia over the past eight months. And I cannot begin to thank you and tell you how I'm starting to understand it in a way that most people do not get to see. Now, Commissioner McKinley brought a point out, a point up about the associations. And yes, we actually have two different types of associations. And of course, they put me on the Legislative Committee. But I've been spending time with the fellow clerks from around the county. And we talk a lot about our County Commission because it's a major part of our job. And I will tell you that many, especially from the large counties, are flabbergasted when I would bring some of you up that they know and say, oh, yeah, you know, they are, they're termed out. And when they hear that we, as a large county, have eight-year term limits, they can't even believe it. Because every other large county, or most of them, have 12 or more. And since I'm in-depth in the minutia, I will tell you, and I will be the first one to say it, and this is just my personal opinion, I would love to see eventually something on a belt for the residents to vote because it's really an injustice that as you learn this job and exit this job with all that knowledge, right at the top of your, top of your career here, we lose all that institutional knowledge. So don't need to comment, but I just wanted to state that for the record, and it's legitimate. And I hope the residents, when they get to vote on something like that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bruzo. That was a wonderful presentation. I can tell you that I speak on behalf of the board when I tell you that we're delighted with your leadership and the executive team that you've selected. I know that you went through basic training and indoctrination at the Coast Guard. I'm sure that this was something very similar as well, it sounds like, very intense process amongst the thousands, over 1,000 duties that the clerk and comptroller has. And I know I have a couple of questions for you, but just as an opening salvo, we do universally enjoy and respect your leadership and governance over this very important office that you hold with probably almost 1,000 employees, 900, around that?
650.
That contemplates both the courts and comptroller and audits. I don't think that people realize, of the 1.5 million people in this county, that in everything that they interact with the government in some way interacts with the clerk and comptroller's office, whether it's a road that was just paved with public funds that went through your office to ensure there was a public purpose, to vindicating their rights in the Circuit Court or County Court in the civil side, or holding those that are accused criminally on the criminal court side, and a vast amount of other duties that it is imperative that your office operate both with integrity and efficiency as well. And we're seeing you reach new heights in both of those regards in your short-term leadership. And we're delighted to be part of your team here at the County Commission. So I'll open it up now to questions by members of the board. We'll start with Commissioner McKinley and then go to Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you. First, I just want to say, as the next County Commissioner up here to term out, I did not ask him to say that. But he, in terms of trying to serve in leadership roles and other associations that benefit Palm Beach County, we are at a severe disadvantage. I mean, my rise to serve as President of the Florida Association of Counties requires five years of service because I start out as second VP, then first VP, then president-elect, then president, and then immediate past president. So that's five years on the Executive Committee. And so anybody who is in their second term of a two-year, or a two-term limit cycle is pushed out of any opportunity to serve in those leadership roles. I know I would love to see Commissioner Bernard rise up in leadership, and unfortunately, there's not enough time for him to do that. So it is frustrating. It's been a long, long time that we sat inside as, I was a stay-at-home mom with three little kids, and we sat at the Cafe Village Walk. And I gave you the Third Inquisition when you announced you were running for the Florida House. So it's such an honor to see you standing before us today in this countywide leadership role. And I'm really impressed with the way that you've taken the helm and that the way that you treat and recognize your staff because we can't do anything in our leadership roles without the wonderful team that we have behind us. And you have a stellar team. And I just want to highlight Tracy, who is the one, as a mayor, we had to interface with the most, and Mayor Kerner. I'm not sure if they've done it yet, but if there's any way to make those signatures on all of the contracts we have to sign electronic, that would save our hands some crap.
We're not there yet, but I did get a stamp towards the end of my second year. So that was helpful. I don't know why it took a year and 10 months to get it, but I'm delighted to have it now. Pass it on to someone else.
Let me ask two questions. Number one, first, it's a complaint that I receive in my office from vendors outside of the county is a frustration that they have in terms of invoice turnaround. So what, do you have any recommendations? Because you're just the final stop. The invoice has to be generated in the county department and get to you. So do you have any, any thoughts on how to improve that process?
What you just saw will drastically improve the process, but all our IT advancement, we are moving through that right now. Including, I know we are going to get to the point where, yes, your electronic signature will be good for all of you. But our turnaround time, as I mentioned in the presentation, on a lot of things went down from 10 days to really three or four. But all the advances, we're going to get where it's seamless. And your county staff is tremendous, and they work really well together. I don't know, Radcliffe, did you want to expand?
Yeah, and we're delighted to hear from any members of your senior staff.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and we're delighted to hear from any members of your senior staff. No, honestly, we would love to hear from anyone that you designate.
Yes, so when vendors get paid, it's actually a two-pronged process. We actually start counting the time of processing when we have what's called a proper invoice. I know I've had some discussions with Kathy Scarlett, in that when we have contracts with some of these vendors, they are, they're supposed to present an invoice, for instance, the purchase order number where we can match things up. Sometimes those are not proper. So part of expanding our OnBase project is to actually work with the purchasing department and the departments to come up with a better way in which the invoices, when we receive them, are what we call proper invoices. So some of it, yes, we can try and help through it, but if it's not a proper invoice and it doesn't have everything that we need, unfortunately, we can't really make the payment.
Do you think it would be beneficial, I mean, one of the largest sectors that I hear complaints from is the construction industry. Would it be beneficial perhaps, and maybe this is a better question for Joe, but to try to do a training with some of the associations of like AGC or ABC and make sure that as they have new members come onboard, that we're training them, or they know how to submit those invoices to avoid delays?
Well, in the case of the, especially with the construction, that will have to be something that we'd have to work jointly with the county departments and with ISS. I know ISS has been working on a system, and we did work with them on that, on a contract management and processing system, where the invoices actually have to go through several layers before they get to us. So it's not something where I can say it's just the clerk alone, we can do that. It would have to be something that we'd have to work jointly with ISS and the county departments involved.
I got it. Mr. Mayor? Thank you. I like that suggestion, Commissioner McKinley. And maybe Verdina, we could get together and see how we could have a joint workshop, maybe offer something to the vendors of the county as far as invoices are concerned. I like it.
Thank you for that, that offer, but again, we've worked over the years very closely with your staff, and I have to tell you, I'm elated that you kept most of the staff that was in place. We currently have workshops with the community, AGC chambers, et cetera. We have worked with them on proper invoices, because what we don't want is to put it through and then it's returned. So I'm very happy to help make sure that we're coordinating those trainings, and we put this, emphasize this element a bit more with our vendors. Because Radcliffe is absolutely correct, if the right information is not submitted on the invoice, it takes us time to process. And then we don't want to send it to you, because then it takes you time to look at it, do the pre-audit, send it back to us, then we got to get back with the vendor. So I am extremely excited about continuing to work with your staff, continuing the automation process. And I have to tell you, the check process was a step-by-step process, but we, working together, got it accomplished, and will continue to work with, with your staff. You have an awesome staff.
So do you, county administrator. Thank you.
And we were able to retain her for another five years. Sorry, Commissioner McKinley, so we're very proud of that.
Just, and for the sake of time, I'll just pose this as a recommendation instead of a question, but when we get ready to do our annual legislative agenda, let's make sure that your office and your team is communicating with our team, and perhaps you can join us in that presentation to talk about how we can work together in Tallahassee, because most of your funding comes from the state, it's just not the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Abruzzo. Pleasure to have you here, as always, and wonderful to see you. First off, I just want to acknowledge, I see Mr. Saitham sitting in the back there, and that the change that you've made in the outreach efforts that you're making, I see them when I'm out in the community and speaking to the HOAs or whatever, and your staff is there and making themselves available. So I think that's, that's really a great service, to help residents understand, you know, what all the services and things that you all can help them with. So trying to make people's lives easier and better here in Palm Beach County, kudos to you and your staff for, for working on that. I also look forward to your recommendations coming forward in regards to Israeli bonds. I think that's a, that's a great suggestion, and, you know, the opportunity to help deliver additional investment opportunities to the public is, is spot on.
Thank you.
You may not know, but I do serve with the National Association of Counties. I serve on a couple of different committees, primarily revolving around technology. And I really appreciate the efforts that you all are putting into increasing your utilization of technology, but I do also, you know, with technology and is this, the whole realm of cybersecurity. And as you, you know, continue to move forward and make these great strides, understanding the implications of protecting the data and the ability to get that data back, you know, in the event something catastrophic were to happen. So one of the things that we've learned over the number of years, working with different governments, is although they may have backups, they don't always understand how long it takes to bring them back up online and get things back and rolling. So just, that's just my word of advice as to you, and if you, we have some really great programs through the National Association of Counties. I'm sure you all clerks have great programs too, but one of them is the cybersecurity boot camps, and they're free. And they're virtually open to any, any staff member, and they will take them through, like, practice cybersecurity drills. So just something to be aware of and available. Even people like you and me, who don't work in cybersecurity, is available to us too, to just get a better understanding of how some of these technologies work. But just delighted to have you and the wonderful work you all are doing in moving your offices forward. So glad you're here today with us.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may respond. Commissioner Weiss, it sounds like we actually need to work even closer together than we already do. I will tell you that the first meeting that I had with the executive staff was about cybersecurity. Because as I am the record holder, as well as holding all the money for the county and many, many other things, that is what keeps me up at night, that if, God forbid, there is a breach, all the, we have everybody's personal information and then some. Actually, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I can invite Shannon up to address the security issue, because we are backed up and backed up and backed up.
I was hoping we wouldn't finish this agenda item without hearing from his chest.
Hi, good morning. So we've done a couple of things to address cybersecurity. So we have a security administrator in the office in our IT department that's dedicated to security. The first thing, as the clerk mentioned, that we talked about this, I think this was in our executive committee meeting, day two, we secured a cybersecurity policy. We're one of the few governments, as you know, a lot of government agencies are actually struggling to do so. So we were able to secure a policy because of all the protocols that we have in place in the office. As far as backup goes, we actually utilize the county's data center out at JOG, and we also have a full backup that goes to a data center. It breaks my heart to say it in Tallahassee, I'm sorry. But we do, so we do multiple backups. During the year, we will do protocols where we actually test the backup and try to pull everything back online. So for the most part, we're able to get basic operations up and running within a day. The largest part, of course, coming back online is, is the court system as opposed to the advantaged financial system. So we're taking a multi-pronged approach, actually meet with the IT team, and we have specific meetings only related to IT security. So it's certainly on the forefront of our mind.
May I respond? Of course. I really appreciate you sharing that, that information. I'm sure it makes our, our public much more at ease knowing the hands that your security is in, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. I have a couple interesting questions for you, and I think that one of the things that we talk a lot about, and a concept that you're very familiar with, your military background, is continuity of operations of the government. And continuity of operations in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, we often talk about, and the public talks about, continuity in terms of first responders, whether it's firefighters, police officers, and EMS. The clerk and comptroller is not probably the first office that the general public thinks of when we concern ourselves with continuity of operations, but as an officer of the court and now county commissioner, I do, because, you know, access to the court system isn't just the judge and the attorney showing up. If, if there is a lack of continuity in operations in the clerk and comptroller's office, then the circuit court and the county court can't do their jobs. If a warrant's issued, that's fine, but if it doesn't make it to, likewise, all of our civil rights and access to courts are either slowed down or stopped if the circuit and county civil courts aren't staffed and accessed by the clerk and comptroller's office. You and I have had the pleasure of working closely together for the majority of our public careers, and we were on a call, a FaceTime town hall with Congresswoman Frankel recently, and I learned a lot about what I would say are very effective and very aggressive COVID mitigation strategies that your office has taken. Can you share with us some context and some actions that you've taken as a clerk and comptroller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure. We were operating about at a little over 45% of vaccinations in the office. And as I mentioned, we cannot afford to shut down. It's, we can't. The court system will come to a screeching halt, as the mayor pointed out. We have cases of children who may or may not be removed from homes, I mean, serious life-changing issues across the board. So it was a concern of mine. We, we lost about 20% of our office was out during Delta, the surge in Delta. We had to bring in people from our branches to cover Maine. It was a real hardship on our staff, and I cannot say enough about them. I bragged about the top, but it's really, you know, the bottom up is, the organization's just tremendous how we have our back. We operate in this family-type atmosphere, and it, and it's not just hyperbole. We believe it, and we live by that every day. So we knew we had to get something done. I actually saw Delray Beach, what they did where, obviously, we have the complications with Tallahassee, but Delray Beach said, you have to get vaccinated, or I'm sorry, you have to get, if you do not get vaccinated, you have to be tested every week. So that little light bulb in my head, I came into the office, said, we need to work on this, and that's exactly what we're doing. The bottom line is this, our employees have to get tested every week. They can opt out of that testing if they get vaccinated. On top of that, they get a $500 stipend. Now, we went from 48% vaccinated at the time this implemented, within three weeks, we hit 83%. We're going to be at 85% soon. So it was a drastic change within our organization, just on that, those, the incentive along with having to get tested every week. And they are getting tested every week. So we know that people are safe, and those, so it's an option for those who do not want to get vaccinated. But at the same time, it's changing our organization, and our numbers are going down drastically as far as COVID cases and such. So we're, we like where we're at and where we're headed.
Very good. So if I understand correctly, you started at 40, about 45% vaccinated, you instituted these measures, they're now touching 85%.
Correct.
You had one-fifth of your workforce out because of COVID-19. Where are you at now, do you know?
We're full. I mean, it's...
Practically zero. 20% is almost zero.
I understand you, you provided that incentive of $500 without utilizing taxpayer funds.
Correct, and that was very important to point out. So we are self-insured, so we, we have reserve funds for our insurance, and we use those funds. And let me say, it's going to probably cost a little over $300,000, all said and done, but each case was averaging, or we had three cases within one week of Delta, that averaged $85,000 per case. So the numbers, it's not even debatable. The cost saving just from the incentive, and it's not using taxpayer money, it's the employees' own money.
As the rates of vaccination rise in your office and the rates of infection decrease precipitously, it sounds like, what is the reaction and feedback getting from your workforce?
You know, tremendous. To be very blunt and direct, as you know I am, I did brace for some possible pushback, but it was the opposite. People were, our employees were thanking myself and their managers and directors, and there was, there was not hardly any issues that I could recall.
Everything.
No issues. None.
Now...
Because again, we gave an option too. For those who really do not want to get vaccinated, they have that right, but they have to get tested every week.
Certainly, and we're all cognizant and concerned with that right, but the trade-off has been, if I understand correctly, that they're required to get tested weekly. Now, that may be a minor inconvenience in time, but how have you navigated the financial impact that it, that is borne by your employee for having to pay for testing every week?
The other good news, get to report, we, we pay for the tests.
Very good. And...
Cost us $18 a test? Okay, 13?
It's low, it's like, if it's, I think it was like between six and seven dollars.
I remember in the first meeting I was in, and they said 18, but it is now six or seven.
Different negotiator you are. So we, we have a workforce touching almost 6,000, and I would say the vast majority, if not all, of those positions are essential and touch the daily lives of our constituents, whether it's the firefighter showing up on scene, or it's a water utility plant operator, or it's the park ranger out on patrol. Having led the way on these mitigation strategies in light of the executive orders and guidelines given to us by Washington and the federal government and our president, what type of advice or direction would you give this board of county commissioners on implementing similar strategies in our workforce?
Well, you know, I also, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Watching some of my constitutional colleagues go through this, we are not unionized, so I know that's a big aspect of how you have to go about the business based on agreements and contracts, but the proof is in the pudding. And the bottom line is, you know, 45 to 85, 20% out, really putting strain on our courts to zero as of today, out. That, that's a big drastic change in a short amount of time. So I would strongly encourage some type of policy. It works. There's, I said it before, you can't debate it, it just, it just works.
Very good. All right, well, thank you so much for your appearance here today, and for your wonderful leadership and from your executive team. I don't see any other further questions or inquiries from members of the board, sir. So we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate it.
Very good. Would the board wish a brief recess prior to taking on the rest of the regular agenda or continue forward?
This is my phone.
All right. We'll move now to Agenda Item 5B1, Facilities Development and Operations.
Do we need a motion to receive and file?
No, we don't have any public item.
I'll go ahead and make that motion to receive and file the clerk and comptroller's report.
I don't think we have...
Well, we have, it's on 5A1. 5A1, yes.
Oh, very good. So we have a motion by Commissioner Weiss, seconded by Commissioner McKinley on 5A1 to receive and file the presentation of the Palm Beach County Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller Operations Update. All in favor, all opposed, that item passes 6 to 0. Commissioner sacks off the dais.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 5B1A and B.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Bernard on 5B1A and B is published, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth regarding a deed in favor of the town of Mankoni Park, requires a supermajority vote, all in favor, all opposed, that item passes 6 to 0. Thank you, facilities. We'll now move to 5C1, Youth Services.
Sir Mayor, I'll make a motion, if there's no speaker cards, to approve Item 5C1A, B, and C, and thank staff for making this happen.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 5C1A, B, and C regarding youth services, enhanced mentoring engagement with the Children's Services Council in united way. There is a comment card, but only if there are questions from members of the board. I don't see any questions from members of the board, so we'll vote, all in favor, all opposed, that motion passes 6 to 0. Very good. Thank you so much for being here today.
As the quick presentation...
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to approve 5D1, which is also with a stipulation neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county, nor any county funds are pledged to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, or interest on the bonds that we would approve.
A motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 5D1, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. There's no comments by members of the board. All in favor, all opposed. The item passes six to zero. Moving now to 5D2, Housing and Economic Development.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 5D2 A and B.
Second.
And state neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county, nor any county funds are pledged to pay the principal premium, if any, or interest on the bonds.
A motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 5D2 A and B as published. No further comments by members of the board. All in favor, all opposed. 5D2 passes six to zero. We're now on 5E1, Administration Regarding Interlocal Agreement with Palm Beach Workforce Development Consortium. Ms. Dorrit Miller, Assistant County Administrator, recognized.
Good morning, Mayor and the board. So this is an interlocal agreement. Sorry, I'm just lassed. Okay. We'll be very, very brief, okay? So this is the Workforce Development Consortium of Palm Beach County, and what it is, it is a governing body who oversees the operations of Career Source, who administers the workforce development program. It consists of Palm Beach County with four partners, and they are the City of Palm Beach, Palm Beach Gardens, City of West Palm Beach, City of Delray Beach, and South Bay. And what this agenda item does is basically combine in the 2007 interlocal agreement and the three amendments. It's making it clearer, just have one document to ensure that we move forward. It's a process improvement for Career Source. And I would like to thank Helene Vis, who worked with us on getting the research done, as well as Sharon Bray from Career Source.
Very good, and I can testify, having been intimately involved in the consortium over the last two years during some turbulent times, but now very much stabilized under the current CEO, that a consolidated interlocal agreement would be of great value. As we all know, the county mayor serves as the chairman of the consortium, and so...
Mayor, I'll move for approval, 5E1.
Second. A motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. No further discussion by members of the board. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes six to zero. We're now on 6A, Commission District Appointments. Oh, that's right, we have our add-on.
Yeah.
3C4.
5F1, I believe.
Yes.
All right, we'll now take up 5F1, an add-on as published. On the add and delete. And then we'll take up 5G1 following 5F1.
Morning.
Morning.
That's a 3C4.
Yeah, that's the 5G1 now. You recognize, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Staff recommends a motion to adopt a resolution approving the recording of the memorandum of understanding, otherwise called a Florida Plan, sought by Florida Attorney General in furtherance of settlement of the action against the three opioid distributors, Mary Sorsberg, Cardinal Helt, and McKesson, and one drug manufacturer, Johnson &amp; Johnson, collectively referred to as the defendants, in the National Multidistrict Opioid Litigation, MDL, and authorizing the mayor to execute a subsequent formal agreement that is substantially the same in terms of the Florida Plan. On August 31st, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners granted the county attorney's request to schedule a private meeting for the attorney-client session between the Board of County Commissioners, the county administrator, the county attorney, the deputy county attorney, chief assistant county attorney, and the outside counsel pursuant to Florida Statute Section 286.011, subsection eight of the Florida statutes, to discuss settlement negotiations of pending litigation in which Palm Beach County is presently a party in re national prescription opiate litigation, case number MDL 2804, Northern District of Ohio, and Palm Beach County versus Purdue Pharma et al., case number 1,18-op-46121-theap, the Northern District of Ohio. On September 14, 2021, a private meeting for the attorney-client session was held. Based on a private attorney-client session, staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners to adopt a resolution approving the non-binding memorandum of understanding of Florida Plan. With me here today are the outside counsel, Hunter Schonlich and Shayna Sacks, who are going to make a brief presentation on the MOU.
Very good. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Can you make sure your microphone is turned on?
Oh, sorry. Is it good now?
Yes.
Hi. Good morning. Thank you again for having us. As a way of reminder, the memorandum of agreement is between the state and the local governments, and it discusses how settlement monies that will come into the county in the coming years will be allocated and used. Reminder that the uses have to be for abatement, and there was an exhibit that we discussed in our meeting, which discusses the core strategies and approved purposes. The funds have to be used for strategies, programming, and services to expand availability of treatment for individuals impacted by substance abuse disorder. All of the money that comes into the state, not only to the counties and the cities, but also to the state specifically, have to be used for abatement. We discussed the details of the MOU in the shade meeting, as Mr. Ottley just discussed, to protect attorney-client privilege, but we're here regarding the resolution and can answer any questions that you have regarding that, to the extent that we're available on a public forum. The next step, if the MOU is approved, would be to discuss the proposed settlements that are on the table right now. There's one being, that's proposed for Johnson &amp; Johnson, and one related to the big three distributors, and there are also some bankruptcies that are pending right now that could also bring money into the county. So we're here to discuss, you know, anything that we can regarding that, but we do believe, as we discussed in session, that this will bring much-needed funding into the county. And I'm here to answer any questions, along with my partner, Hunter Schonlich, that the public or the commission has in relation to the MOU, to the extent I can, and the resolution, which is before you today. Thank you.
Very good, and we appreciate your advocacy on behalf of the county and your appearance here today, and your constant communication with the members of the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. I know I've got a number of advocates in this space watching this meeting right now. So for the sake of those that are watching this, since the memorandum is a public record, can you go over some of the highlights?
So as I mentioned earlier, all the monies that come in have to go towards abatement. As I mentioned, funds for strategy, programming, and services to expand availability of treatment for individuals impacted by substance abuse disorder. The list is designed to be quite broad, so I believe that the commission will be able to find many ways to be able to use this money to abate the epidemic. There's an overall distribution scheme, which is discussed in the MOU. Direct payments to subdivisions, which represent fifteen percent of the money that comes into the county. That money is determined according to what's referred to as the negotiation class metrics. Amount of opioids shipped into the county is the first metric that's used. Number of opioid deaths in the county is the second. And the third is the number of people who have suffered from opioid use disorder. And again, that's fifteen percent, which is a direct payment to the county. The second bucket is a regional fund, which is a sliding scale between thirty and forty percent, depending on the year. And that is separated into qualified and non-qualified counties. It's our belief that the county would satisfy the requirements to be a qualified county, which will entitle it to another direct payment. And then the last bucket is a state fund, which will be between forty-five and fifty-five percent, depending on the year as well. That's the overall distribution scheme. The case was filed in October of 2018, and there was a very long negotiation process with the state. We worked towards a resolution to ensure that the county benefited the most from that negotiation, which we believe it has, as it gets a direct payment, as well as an additional direct payment by being a qualified county. We're going to discuss the settlements in a future shade meeting, but those settlements are, as of right now, looks like we're going to start to get payments in February of 2022. One of the settlements is over a ten-year period, one is over an eighteen-year period. As to the bankruptcies, I can update the board on what's happening there. In the Purdue bankruptcies, there are a few appeals that are pending right now, so that process is ongoing. For the Mallinckrodt bankruptcy, the date for voting on the plan that's been submitted as of now has been extended to October 13th. We've already discussed that with counsel, and will act in the direction that we discussed previously. But there are a few things that are still being discussed and negotiated to amend that plan. There are a few other smaller bankruptcies and the potential for more bankruptcies in the future. But overall, as we mentioned, we believe that this is best for the county and will bring necessary funding as soon as February of 2022 to the county to spend, again, solely on abatement, and remember that the state is also bound by that same abatement.
Okay, and some examples of appropriate abatement expenses would include?
So there's a few large, larger categories that I can run through. So category one is treatment opioid use disorder. Category two is to support people in treatment and recovery. Category three, connect people who need help to the help they need it, meaning those who are leaving a jail facility, or anybody who just needs support and needs an answer to any question. Number four is address the needs of criminal justice-involved persons. The next is address the needs of pregnant or parenting women and their families, including babies with neonatal abstinence syndrome. Next is prevent over-prescribing and ensure appropriate prescribing and dispensing of opioids. Next is prevent misuse of opioids. Prevent overdose deaths and other harms, which is harm reduction. The last section talks about where the money would go, more specifically towards the strategies. One would be towards first responders, which we know are on the front lines of the opioid epidemic. Discussions, related leadership, planning, and coordination, training of officers and other individuals who might be able to help abate. And the last category is research, and research, which is mostly related towards opioid use disorder-related.
Okay, and I think that those abatement expenses are comprehensive, and I support that portion, and I know that the federal judge handling the MDL, the abatement, was the most important thing to him coming out of these types of settlements. David, could you, there's going to be a state task force that's putting, that's being put together for some of this, and I think it's going to be led by the Attorney General. Do you know, off the top of your head, or any of you at the table, what the makeup of that, and I think that was one of the requirements, is you had to have this task force, what the makeup of that is?
What the makeup of the state's task forces? I don't have that information handy, but I can get some more information on that.
Yeah, from what I'm hearing from some of the advocates that I speak to on a regular basis, is while the proceeds from this settlement are supposed to be really focused on abatement and treatment, and that the task force will only have, I think, two representatives from local government, even though we're the ones with the boots on the ground, and all of the rest will be predominantly political appointments, handled under an agency that traditionally deals with law enforcement. And what I don't want to see this happen, and I know the officers are on the front end, and certainly there's a category among all of those other categories you read for the criminal justice system, but if, as I heard you, it was more to help those that are in the system with substance use disorders that they may be suffering from. What I want to make sure is, like, our state attorney always says, we can't arrest our way out of this, and I just want to make sure that the makeup of any task forces that are put together are patient-focused, for the most part, the majority of that. And then, even though it's frustrating to be sitting here today, and it's frustrating in that not all sixty-seven counties in Florida, and certainly not more than four hundred cities in the state of Florida, decided to participate in any type of lawsuit, holding these entities accountable for the damage and the death that they caused. And this settlement rewards all of those entities that didn't file a lawsuit. And when I look at knowing that Palm Beach County had the highest per capita overdose death rate in the entire state of Florida, and our payout will represent eight-point-six percent, even though if you were to calculate what our death rate was from, or it continues to be, it's much higher than that. Palm Beach County will receive five-point-five percent of that overall percentage, although I think that's overall the state, but fifteen percent of what comes in of the fifty-three point, nearly fifty-three-point-three million dollars. When I look at this and I see that the payout, a hundred, let me see if I get this right, a hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents will be awarded to Glen Ridge. Explain to me how the accounting for these smaller cities is going to be more expensive, and they don't have systems of care. So what are our options, and I don't know if Mr. Radcliffe from the League of Cities is here, but what are our options for those small municipalities that are going to see funds come into their small municipalities that have no system of care set up to be able to provide abatement services?
Hunter Schonlich, thank you for giving us this opportunity. To respond to your question, Commissioner, what is important to understand is that certain of the smaller entities are not getting direct payments to them. They're going into regional buckets, so for the most part, it is going to be controlled at the regional level and at the county level, or the city, if the city has the resources. We're not seeing, and we're looking at this, these type of resolutions across the country, and the same question is brought up. If there is no resources, the small payment is not going to change, to answer your question. The vast majority of the money will go into the regional spends, and larger counties such as Palm Beach, which get direct, direct payments.
So that hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents here, that's the percentage determined for Glen Ridge, is that coming to the county, or is that going to the regional managing entity?
I don't have, we don't have the answer for that, but we can provide that to the council, to the commission.
Because I think it's important to note that our regional managing entity does not only serve Palm Beach County, it serves other counties. And, you know, the future memorandum of understanding that we're going to have to sign off on, I think we need to recognize that those funds need to be spent in the counties that experience those deaths. And I don't want to hand this assistance over to SEFban and then have it go to Okeechobee County. And now, they have services and they have needs, too, but when you're looking at per capita, we, you know, that Glen Ridge patient, if they were, they were serviced in Palm Beach County, and I just want to protect the resources in Palm Beach County to be able to provide services to people in Palm Beach County. And I reluctantly will approve and support this agreement today, but there's a lot of questions and a lot of concern that I have moving forward on how it's being distributed. I have a lot of concerns about our managing entity that I haven't been shy about over the years, and I have grave concerns that somehow that large percent that's going to the state is going to turn into a political madhouse. the state is going to turn into a political madhouse. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley, Commissioner Weiss, and then to Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, and as being district commissioner for Glen Ridge, there, it's a wonderful little town, and, but it is a very small, small entity, and they don't have those kinds of services available directly to, for their residents. I just want to share, you know, and I understand everybody is trying to do the best that they can under a very difficult situation and lots of moving parts, but when you think about the damage that was inflicted on this community by the over-prescribing, the over-production of opioids put into our area where we had, I mean, we had pill mills open, and they were coming from all over the country down here, and nobody was stopping it until our state attorney, Dave Ehrenberg, really got involved in trying to resolve this. But there was tremendous damage inflicted, not only on the people themselves, but on the entire taxpayers of this county. We, as taxpayers, paid the costs of the services of rescuing peoples and providing the medical care for them, and there's no contemplation of reimbursement to the taxpayers who have been damaged by the, what was going on by these companies. And that, you know, and I understand that that's not, that's not being contemplated, but I think there needs to be some acknowledgement somewhere of what was done, who did it, and, you know, who's picking up the cost for it, which were the local taxpayers here in Palm Beach County that were saddled with that because of what was happening by these companies. And, you know, I will share the same comment that my colleague said. I mean, I will reluctantly support this, but it's disappointing that, I mean, throughout this discussion, there's no acknowledgement of not only the damage that was done to the individuals that got addicted to these drugs and their families, but the damage that was done to the entire county and the residents here in Palm Beach County.
May I comment? I just want to highlight, I know we spoke about it in our shade meeting, but to, and we'll discuss it further when we get to the actual details of the proposed settlements that are, we're going to discuss, but I don't want to, I want to remind you of the injunctive relief that's going to be discussed in our shade meeting for these companies. The companies are not being attacked just financially, and the finances are huge. These are very big companies, I understand that. But the injunctive relief is going to be very, very, very impactful going forward. Just to give you a little bit of a highlight, because it is public knowledge at this point, part of the Johnson &amp; Johnson proposed settlement is they're going to be out of the business for 10 years, and they are a very, very big player in the opioid market. Globally, yes, globally as well, correct. We had discussed that they control a large portion of the actual opioid, opiate seeds that are in Australia. And as to the distributors, one of the biggest things that's being done there injuntively is that they're going to have to report now to each other before they were able to hide and say, well, we didn't know how many pills were being pumped into that Walgreens. Well, now they can't hide anymore, and that's going to have a very big impact going forward as well. But I appreciate and understand what you're saying, and I will find out about specifically Glen Ridge, but I understand your overall concerns, and we'll get back to you on those.
All right, thank you. We'll go now to Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you. I see that Richard Radcliffe has re-entered the building. Richard, just to bring you up to speed, Melissa had talked about, Commissioner McKinley had talked about how some of the smaller cities are going to be receiving dollars and really don't have the ability to distribute those dollars. Is there a way that the county and the League of Cities can work together for some sort of an agreement that would direct those dollars that are going to go to the smaller cities that have no abatement programs to the county so that the county can do that? I mean, we have Jupiter Inlet Colony is getting $300,013,000, and they have 200 residents, so, and no abatement process whatsoever. And there's smaller cities that are getting ridiculous little amounts of money. So is there a process in place or a process that we can put together, and of course, working with the attorneys, that would direct those dollars to the county? Not to the bucket, but to the county?
Yes, we can, I'll bring this, I'll bring this to discussion to my board this month and see what they say. I'm sure we'll work something out. It probably, they could pool the money in another way, and maybe they're, they can do something that way, or work with, just work and, but it depends on the actual documents when you get everything finalized, because it is so restrictive that we don't know exactly what it's going to be. But whatever it is, you know, and I agree with your sentiments that it's kind of like, I guess it's better than nothing, but it's, it is what it is, and whatever it is, we will work to do the best for our community, because like yourselves, we've all worked on this, and it's had a devastating effect on our communities, our people, our families, our churches. So we're ready to take whatever we can get and work with the county.
Well, we'd appreciate that, and we would like it to stay in the Palm Beach County bucket, not the regional buckets. That's why the League of Cities would be important, and the smaller cities working with us to make sure that those dollars stay here, because at the end of the day, the burden has fallen on the county more than anybody else.
May I add something?
Sure.
So I had an opportunity to go back and just look at the actual language, and something that we had included goes directly to what your concern is. So the amounts to be distributed to a county or municipality are determined by the negotiation class metrics, which are those three things that I highlighted before, but nothing in this agreement prevents the county from coming to an agreement with any of the municipalities as to how their money would be. So we can absolutely come to an agreement with Glen Ridge or, you know, any of these other places to have them provide the money back up to the county to be spent for their benefit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno, Commissioner McKinley.
Yeah, I just read that too, that they can roll it up to the county if they agree. So Ms. Baker, I think it's imperative we begin these conversations with the League of Cities. But Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out too that many of the litigating subdivisions in the state of Florida filed their lawsuits long before our attorney general actually filed one back in the day. That was under Pam Bondi. And I just think it's important that it was local government who put the pressure on the state to even join the lawsuit. So I would, I would hope that they would participate a little more hand-in-hand with local government on that.
All right, very good. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Thank you, council. We're currently on a 5F1 on a motion to adopt a resolution approving non-binding memorandum of understanding sought by the Florida Attorney General. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, as published in the add delete. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Weiss. No further comments by members of the board. All in favor, all opposed? That item passes six to zero with Commissioner Sacks absent from the dais. We'll move now to formerly 3C4 on the consent agenda, now 5G1 on the regular agenda, engineering. Commissioner Moreno, you recognized.
Thank you. It was I who asked this be polled from the consent and brought to the regular agenda. So I'd like the presentation, and I have some questions.
All right, very good. Turn it over to county engineer, Mr. Ricks.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. County Administrator Baker. With me is District County Administrator Pet Rutter, County Attorney Liz Herman, and Director of My Roadway Production, Morton Rose. Before you is an agenda item talking about acquiring a right-of-way for FDOT. They're doing a project, and they're acquiring a right-of-way, and we're asked to actually take over from maintenance of the right-of-way. This right-of-way is related to a big interchange project, goes from Military Trail to Donaros Road. They're, the interchange is on I-95. They're going to make it a diamond interchange. And so it's resurfacing and widening, you know, like I said earlier, from Military Trail to Donaros Road, and it includes the Central Boulevard Bridge that crosses the I-95. And then part of the project would be tinfoil-lined sidewalks and also buffer bike lanes. In terms of the project, right now it's programmed for spring of 2025 in terms of construction start date to completion, three-year project, 2028, and estimated project cost about $61 million. So one of the key selling points is the reason why we're asked to take over the maintenance is that Central Boulevard is a county road, and because of the project, they got to do some modifications to the bankment along Central Boulevard, and since Central Boulevard is a county road, they'll acquire the right-of-way, but post-project, they're asking for the agency, meaning us, the county, to take over the maintenance to do that. And this drawing shows a little more clearer in terms of where the right-of-way is, is on one side of the Central Boulevard roadway that they're going to acquire this right-of-way. Over for questions.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Moreno, you recognized?
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of comments. One is on page four, or on your fourth slide that you showed with the construction information. If you go to the, and you and, we talked about this the other day when I was touring the facility, the website for this, which is www.n95pgacentralboulevard.com, has different numbers. So I just want everyone to note that the projected costs and start and finish dates can easily change in the future.
That's correct.
So we are not, even though this is up here as a slide, it's just a projection, it is not a true cost, it really might not, because the state's website shows a start date of 2028 and a completion date of 2031 and a cost of $85 million. And just a reminder, that is not a cost to our residents.
That's correct. We verified the numbers with DOT, this is from your earlier conversation, Commissioner, and these, the most recent information we got from DOT.
And then they had something different on their own website, so that's why. I want anybody who's checking or following this, because I know the residents of Palm Beach Gardens, this is a topic that comes up almost in every conversation. So that's why I just want residents to know that there is information out there. There are different start and finish dates and different prices, but at the end of the day, the cost is not being burdened on us from our local dollar, tax dollars that we pay to the county.
That's correct.
Okay. Also, in the memorandum of agreement, there was an indication about a future permitting for driveways that are no closer than 654 feet. I am guessing that the reason you came up with that number is because there is a driveway at that point right now which goes into the Central Gardens development. Is that correct?
Okay. Yes, you're correct. The 654 dimension is within what's known as the limited access right-of-way for the state for the interchange system, and so it's standard requirement that you cannot, and that's the reason why you have a limited access. It's standard requirement that a driveway cannot be placed in that area. So what they wanted to do is to make sure that the county fully understands that and has no intention of permitting on Central Boulevard any driveway within that section.
All right, thank you. And then in discussions with the City of Palm Beach Gardens, I believe that the sound and visual impacts for this same corner still remain unaddressed. I know that they were looking for a sound wall because of the apartment buildings that have gone in, that went in after the study first was done, so that hasn't been worked out yet. I know that is not part of our purview. I just wanted on the record that FDOT, the City of Palm Beach Gardens, haven't worked it out yet, and hopefully with the help of the county, we can get a sound and, a sound wall in that area, sound and visual impacts.
Yes, ma'am.
So we can continue working on that.
Understood, yeah.
Okay. I appreciate being able to pull this from consent, just that there would be a little bit more of discussion on it. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Moreno. Are there any other inquiries or questions by members of the board? Again, we're on agenda item 5G1, which is found on page 10 of the agenda under the consent agenda. It's now on the regular agenda, and we're looking for a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a right-of-way acquisition memorandum of agreement with the FDOT concerning the I-95 and Central Boulevard interchange project.
A motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 5G1A and B. No further comments by members of the board. All in favor, all opposed? That motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Sacks absent from the dais. That concludes the regular agenda and the add and delete. So we'll move now to Commissioner Appointments, which is found on page 44. We'll start to my right with Commissioner McKinley. None. Commissioner Moreno? Vice Mayor Weinroth?
None.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have one appointment, James Hansen to discover the Palm Beaches.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Weiss on appointments. All in favor, all opposed? That passes six to zero. Any further appointments? I have no appointments. Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes, sir. On behalf of Commissioner Sacks for District 5, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Larry Schnair to the Palm Beach County Sports Commission.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Weiss on behalf of Commissioner Sacks on an appointment, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed? That passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make appointment of Charles St. Lawrence to the Housing Finance Authority.
We have a motion by Commissioner Weiss, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth on an appointment. All in favor, all opposed? That passes six to zero. That concludes Agenda Item 6A, Commissioner District Appointments. We'll move now to 7A1, Administration Comment. You recognize, Madam Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. Just a brief update on our directives on, for the Economic and Technical Summit, that has been pushed out to the spring of 2022, which we hope our good friend, the COVID, will have significantly been minimized, and we can hold this in person, because we believe that it'll probably be a bit more productive if we're able to visit each other in the room, same room. The Singer Island submerged land, we're finalizing that. That was a particular issue that came up regarding Mr. Loesman and landowners' right. We, and Riviera Beach, compliance with our $50 million waterfront bond issue. We are at this point, they are in compliance with the rules and regulations, so we will finalize that particular area. The Southwest County governmental centers, we did our workshops on those. The ATV park, you gave us direction to move forward on, so we are working on that particular issue as well. We were able to, also speaking of green, we were able to put in our various electrical chargers, REC's, in this building, and hopefully the mayor, the vice mayor is extremely happy about that. And we did hear from some of our other environmentalist folks, and they are extremely happy. So we will continue to monitor that particular pilot program and expand in the future as necessary. I would, at this point, like to ask you to file and receive this particular report.
So move.
A motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner McKinley to receive and file the updated board directives by the administrator. All in favor, all opposed? That passes six to zero. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognizing response.
Thank you. I had two questions. Ms. Baker, when can we expect to see the RFP go out for the ATV park?
I will get back with you. Staff is currently working on that, and I don't know that answer right off the top of my head, but I'll get back with you. We are moving in that direction.
The second question I had, I think, local governments and state governments are getting beat up a little bit because they haven't started spending their federal American Rescue Plan dollars. We are into our new fiscal year. When will we see the spending plan for those dollars?
It is, I am planning to bring that spending plan to you at the November meeting. We have, that'll give us enough time now that we are putting together our proposal from a staff level, go out, speak with the community to get the input. We'll be talking to you before we go out to the community, and then we'll be bringing that particular plan to you at the November 2nd meeting.
Okay, so that'll come to us November 2nd. And when can we expect to see those dollars start actually hitting the street?
Well, it depends on what the board does, what you approve, and then we're ready to move forward. We have six years to expend these dollars. You've asked us to spend them on legacy, more of them on legacy-type projects, infrastructure-type projects. That takes time, and so we won't be spending the dollars immediately. But the plan is to ensure that the projects that are selected will be able to be implemented and completed by 2026. So that timeframe is going to definitely have an impact on the various types of projects. If they are projects that we control, we're able to approve them, those are projects that will more than likely move first. If they are, let's take, for example, water or environmental type issues, if the Army Corps of Engineer, along with South Florida Water Management and others, that we have no direct influence over, if those are the type projects and we have not started those projects, that is going to be an issue as far as time is concerned. So we are looking at that. We are making the appropriate contacts to make sure whatever we're going to bring to this board and make a recommendation, it is something we believe is achievable.
Now, is there a trigger that of a certain, a certain percentage of those dollars isn't spent by a particular timeline or date that we risk losing them?
What I, it is my understanding that dollars more than likely have to be somewhat encumbered or you've allocated those dollars by 2024 and actually expended by 2026.
Okay, we got an email this week that there's about forty-eight million that was, came to us in CARES Act funding for housing assistance. Thirty-one million of that forty-eight million was expended, but because of pressure under the ARPA dollars, we're no longer going to distribute out of that forty-eight-million-dollar pot. We're going to have to start distributing out of the ARPA-dollar pot, which means we're leaving fourteen million in housing assistance on the table. So what happens to that fourteen million from the CARES Act that we weren't able to get out the door?
I am not aware of what you're referring to. Unfortunately, I was out of the office, trying to work and be out of the office. At the same time, I may have overlooked that memo, but I am not aware that we've left any dollars on the table. We've been trying to push those dollars out the door as soon as possible. And if their staff, if you're aware of something, I'm not, we don't try to leave any dollars on the table. Those CARES dollars was housing, working directly with our Community Services Department and paying rent, attempting to definitely avoid people being put out on the street. We are working through the courts, along with legal aid, in order to continue spending those dollars for rent and primarily rent. And there are some mortgages, but primarily rent. And I don't believe we're going to leave any of those dollars on the table. So correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. There's the stimulus dollars that we received, the first amount for rental assistance, and we had to expend sixty-five percent of it before September 30th, and we did meet that. There is, for the new money under ARP for rental, there is a deadline to do so much, and I don't remember the percentage offhand, so that's why we flipped to this new pot of money to make sure we meet that percentage, and then we'll go back and spend the remaining. And there's also an application process that we're working through now that we can get additional dollars because the communities that didn't encumber the sixty-five percent, if they don't believe that they're going to ever be able to spend all theirs, they'll reallocate it to those that are spending it. So we may get additional funds off of that first pot, but we won't know that yet.
Okay, well, thank you, because that wasn't very clear in the memo that I read, but then again, I read my memos sometimes at two in the mornings.
Yeah, yeah, so we're on it, but thank you.
Appreciate that.
Very good. Commissioner Marino, you recognized?
Thank you. I just wanted to put a bug in your ear. I think there is a, we've been talking with Riviera Beach and Palm Beach Shores and Palm Beach about Peanut Island, just wanted to see how we are doing with that. And also, I know that there's a dredging project that's being discussed off of Palm Beach Shores. This may be not, may not be the time or place, but I just wanted to see if there was any additional information.
With the agreement with the port, it is in their court right now to approve that agreement, and then when it comes back, we will bring it to the board for approval. In addition to signing off on that agreement, we are also working with the city of Riviera Beach, Palm Beach Shores, along with the town of Palm Beach on a memorandum of understanding. And if, since the county would be taking over, to make sure that we're all in agreement, for the most part, on the type of activities, the sound, the notices, the directional signage, et cetera, that will be involved in the process. So we'll be trying to move both of those agreements along simultaneously. In addition to the Palm Beach Shores dredging, you did bring that up to me on yesterday. I have not had a chance to get with staff on the nitty-gritty details, but as we discussed it on yesterday, we are, we will look at it. We will assist in any way that we can, but we are going to be cautious as far as taking on the liability of a project that we really did not bid. We will work with, find, along with the town, and provide any assistance that we can, we can provide. But once we determine what the details are, I will get back with you. Thank you.
Very good. Any further questions of the Administrator on 7A1? Very good. Thank you for the update.
I do have one pleasant thing, or one thing to brag about on our outstanding staff. In, at the end of August, the Conference of Minority Transportation Officials, who we refer to as COMTO, and we are a member, they are a national organization. This year, the national conference was virtual. COMTO Palm Beach County submitted Clinton Forbes name as Corporate Executive of the Year, and he did win as Executive Corporate of the Year through a nationwide competition. In addition to that, our chapter also submitted Palm Tran for the Public Agency of the Year, and we actually won based on all of the support this board has given us and the changes that we've made in our system. So I am extremely proud of the fact that Palm Tran is on the move. We've got a lot of our transit agencies looking at what Palm Beach County does, and we've got great leadership in place, and we're continuing to grow our transit system here in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Administrator. We're delighted to hear that. County Attorney?
No comments, thank you.
Very good. We'll move now to Agenda Item Eight, Commissioner Comments. We'll start with District One, Commissioner Maria G. Marino.
Thank you. I would like to request an off-site proclamation recognizing the one-hundredth anniversary of the Jupiter Inlet District.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marino, seconded by Commissioner McKinley, all in favor, all opposed, that proclamation passes six to zero.
Thank you, that's it.
Very good. Commissioner, District Two, Commissioner Greg K. Weiss.
No comments.
District Three, I don't have any comments, except if someone could offer the off-site proclamation for me.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will be pleased to request an off-site proclamation declaring October 15, 2021 as TV Azteca Day in Palm Beach County on your behalf.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth on my behalf for off-site proclamation, seconded by Commissioner Weiss, all in favor, all opposed, that passes six to zero. And I don't have any comments at this time, but I'll certainly offer my colleagues after matters by the public to, for any further comments at that time. So then we'll now go to Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments. I'll start with the email that I've sent out to each of your offices. Basically, to let people watching know what's going on, our office has been receiving a lot of constituent inquiries about building permits that seem to be taking longer than usual to get through the process. And I had mentioned this in a prior communication. I think that we need to, Madam Administrator, do whatever we can to focus on this issue as far as being able to move these permits in an expeditious fashion. Number one, obviously, our constituents deserve to be able to have routine matters addressed in a, in an expedited fashion. And number two, I think that there's always the issue of getting these matters on the tax rolls for the larger projects, and I think it's penny-wise and dollar-foolish if we are not able to staff effectively. And I understand from conversations with staff that we are significantly below the authorized number of people in that department for reasons of a workforce that is very tight right now because of the post-pandemic. I'm assuming that salary is a part of the problem, and I am certainly hoping that we put all of our attention on this as quickly as possible so that I get less calls about this than, you know, this, this actually is the most traffic we're getting, even more than COVID right now as far as people having concerns. So, Madam Administrator, I was wondering if you can give me some feedback on what might be able to be done to, you know, expedite or facilitate a resolution of this problem?
All right. I will, thank you for that question, and I will tell you that we will work earnestly, as we have in the past, to move forward and get positions filled. However, I do want to share with the board what we have already done, and the mere fact that our permits have increased significantly over the years. In seventeen, we, we processed fifty-three thousand permits. In eighteen, we permitted, we permitted sixty-four thousand. Twenty nineteen was sixty-one thousand, twenty twenty was sixty-seven thousand, and in twenty twenty-one, we jumped to almost eighty-three thousand permits. So we are, it's a two-edged sword. We are growing in this county by leaps and bounds, and especially in the unincorporated areas, so we're getting more and more permits. And due to the fact that a number of people are, was home during the pandemic, we see a lot of home improvements being done. So we've had a significant number come in. In addition to that, we have, over the years, added eight positions in 2017 to the Building Division particularly. Twenty eighteen, another eighteen, twenty nineteen, fourteen, twenty twenty, eighteen, and in twenty twenty-one, I added twenty-one new positions. And so we have not only added positions, trying to keep pace with the market, because that's where, what we're talking about, but we are currently streamlining our process. We have, no longer do we review, what we allow is self-issued permits, including air conditioning changeouts and plumbing, water heater changeouts. Customer service staff help applicants create online portals so that we can account for online submittals and also all permitting services. We are doing a lot of automation in that particular area. It was in the pipeline, but of course, COVID kind of sped us along. So that is a good thing. You know, we are looking at, currently, the Building Department receives approximately three hundred permanent applications a day and perform nearly a thousand inspections per day. We do allow for third parties, contracting with third parties, to assist with inspections, but they're having, the private sector is having difficulty hiring as well. We have worked with and will continue to work with our Building Department to make sure that we're growing our own here in Palm Beach County, and a number of you have heard me talk about that because it's difficult recruiting people here because of the cost of living, specifically housing. And so we have been advertising our top PCB-level positions for a while, and they're, they're being advertised and open until filled. We started this back in 2020. We currently have no applicants in certain positions that have applied or just simply not qualified. We have created an apprenticeship program, so people that meet the basics, we can pair them with certified individuals and move them along, and as long as they get their certification, they continue to move up the ladder in this particular case. In addition, we have created, again, the apprenticeship program, and I'm missing the other that we did. But we are working toward getting it done. This is not just the county issue, it is a city, it is a private sector issue, it is across the nation. There are more jobs than applicants applying for these jobs. So what we want to ensure the public is that we will automate as much as possible that are not life-threatening and safety, and we are attempting to fill positions as fast as we possibly can. We cannot compete with the private sector when they come in and they steal the folks that we've trained, and I don't blame them. So we are working with them. We have adjusted salaries, but we cannot compete with the private sector, and there are some cities we can't compete with. But we are attempting to make sure that our salaries are adjusted. We adjusted the Building Division salaries outside of the Evergreen Study, and that was done prior to us doing this last phase to make sure that we were competitive within other comparable counties and some of our cities so that we can retain our employees. We will continue to look at our processes, take the appropriate steps, and try to reduce the waiting time. But I, I do want to share with the board and the public, our permitting has substantially gone up. You cannot staff up to that type of level because when it starts to come down, you will need to lay people off. I've been in that position, looking at someone and telling them permits are just not coming in, and I'm going to have to lay you off. That is a very, very difficult thing to do. And so we will try to make sure that we move forward, we staff appropriately as we can with comparable others, and to make sure that the people we're hiring are trained and ready to do the job appropriately.
Well, I certainly appreciate that very thorough report, and again, anything you can do to continue in that fashion. I mean, this is a red-hot county.
Oh, I agree.
We all know that. We've been at BDB presentations where we're being told that it seems like New York is relocating to Florida. And so anything we can do to open our arms and embrace those companies that want to come down, I know one of the things that Kelly always mentions is whatever they can do to expedite approvals is something that will entice a company to come to South Florida. So I certainly thank you for that report, and I, obviously, there's a continuing need and anything that can be done to, again, whether it's outside consultants or, again, additional staff. I don't think this is a bubble. I think this is going to continue for quite some time, but none of us has a Ouija board or a crystal ball, so I certainly don't want to be in the position, like you said, to have to lay off people after you staff up. Thank you. On EV charges, County Administrator, thank you. I do appreciate, I know I've been harping on that for several years, and, but I thank you for your first step, and I would love to see that now at the Vista Center and, and other county buildings. I think that this is, this is the, the direction of our constituents, and we certainly need to facilitate that. On the same note, I was absent at our last zoning meeting because I was out in Las Vegas, and I didn't bet the house, but I did go and see the Boring Company's presentation of what they're doing to create underground transportation systems. And at a meeting coming up in the future, I'll give a more thorough report on that, but I think that there is a real opportunity for our county to look below the surface to move traffic in some situations, whether it's within the urban areas or maybe even outside the urban areas, to move people from east to west. So, but we'll have a, a more thorough conversation. My book report on my trip to Las Vegas will be in the future.
May I go to Vegas so I can talk to them and make sure they understand what they're doing?
It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'm wearing my pink shirt, and I'm sure before the month is out, we'll be wearing a lot of pink up here, and I'm sure there'll be a bus that'll be brought over with a wrapping about breast cancer awareness. A lot of people have put off routine testing because of the pandemic, whether it's colonoscopies or mammograms, and we just heard this week that the First Lady of our, of our state has been diagnosed with breast cancer. It is something that has come close to my family, and I know a lot of people on this diocese. dais have friends and family who have been affected by this. I encourage everybody out there to take advantage of the opportunity to get a mammogram and get those tests done, and early detection certainly is something that is going to make it a lot less of a, of a problem if there is something going on. We spoke about the investment policy today. I thanked the Clerk Abruzzo for his in-depth report. I have been a strong proponent of investment in Israel bonds. When I was at the City of Boca Raton, we initiated those investments. I know the late Commissioner Bert Aronson was a strong proponent of getting the county to invest in Israel bonds. If there is anything that needs to be adjusted in the investment policy to facilitate an increase in those numbers, I think that Clerk Abruzzo said that they were investing about 2% right now, and he'd like to double up on that. If there's any action this Board needs to take, I'd certainly like to see that brought forward. If not, I certainly would be very supportive of anything in that regard. Certainly, that's been a very safe investment, and the yields on that are certainly outpacing anything we can see domestically. I think that's about it for now. Thank you, Mayor. If I have anything else, I'll, I'll bring it back up during Matters by the Public.
Very good, round two. Commissioner Weiss, do you have any comments on behalf of Commissioner Sacks? All right. Commission District Six, Commissioner Melissa McKinley.
Thank you. I thought we were going to need a separate agenda for that. Yeah, on the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I'm one of those ones that they're watching very carefully, and so I make it a point every October to make sure I schedule my mammogram, and if people don't think women are tough, I challenge you to go through a mammogram. And I just want to thank Kate Watt and the Coleman Foundation for everything that they do in Palm Beach County to try to make that accessible for women, particularly out in the glades where medical care is sometimes hard to come by. I want to touch on a touchy subject. I have been a Commissioner for seven years and have gone through 28 hours of required ethics training from the State of Florida that's provided to us through the Association of Counties, at least that's where I take it, and one of the things that Herb Teal, who's a longtime county attorney for Leon County, who now contracts with the Association after his retirement and provides some of that training, is letting commissioners know that they need to be very careful how they utilize their social media to not get their fellow colleagues in trouble or in any violation of sunshine law. That includes tagging us on political, or, you know, posts that may be a subject matter that comes before the vote for consideration. I have had particular incidents where I've been tagged at events that I haven't attended that has caused problems for me because I have declined other invitations, and then they see me tagged at an event that I wasn't at, but they think I was there because I was tagged there, and have had to actually issue a cease and desist memo after asking numerous repeated times for that practice to stop. So I would ask that the County Attorney, if you could provide to us a legal opinion on the do's and don'ts of utilizing our social, our official county commission's social media practices, I would appreciate that. Thank you. No further comments.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. We'll go now to Commissioner Mac Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request, and I made it to two off-site proclamations, one declaring October 2021 as Palm Beach County Archive Month in Palm Beach County, and requesting an off-site proclamation declaring October 10, 2021, as the 110th National Day of the Republic of China, Taiwan. Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard for two off-site proclamations, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth, both uniquely timely proclamations, might I add, given the Clerk and Comptroller was here today, and there seems to be some issues in Taiwan and China. All in favor, all opposed, that passes six to zero. That concludes Agenda Item Eight, Commissioner Comments. The Board will recess until 2:00 PM, when we shall return for Matters by the Public. We are in recess. Thank you.[1793.61][1793.61]